Hi Marcia. Hi Marcia.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, sorry it took me a second to get back over to the other computer to admit you in.
It's fine, it's, it's fine, I'm in my Zoom office.
Great, um, so I did want to go over with you if people join via phone, we still have the same procedure where they can do star six to unmute themselves, but they actually can do star nine to raise their hand and then we can call on them one by one to give their public comment.
Okay, there's also just a little thing at the bottom that says raise hand.
Oh great, um, that'll be for people that are live in the meeting and then for people that are on the phone, they can press star nine to indicate they want to make a public comment.
Okay.
Um, and I'm guessing, do you feel comfortable monitoring the raise hand stuff?
Sure.
Oops, sorry, um, someone's calling, I'll be right back.
Okay, and, because I'm cutting my own here, I'm going back on stop video.
Sounds good. Hi Tracy. Alrighty, Ron, I see that you're in, um, do you need me to give you a special role so that you can livestream this or are you good to go with what you've got?
I can hear you, uh, it's just a black picture, right?
Right now it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I'm good to go, so you switched to Zoom, huh?
Yeah, we thought that the, the user controls in terms of managing other people would be a little better, uh, because we can actually turn people's cameras off on Zoom, which was a problem on Google.
Well, this makes it easy for me because you're in control.
Great, so, um, why don't you go ahead and start the livestream at about, uh, six fif- or five fifty, um, just with that holding screen?
Uh, we're just going to, uh, our, our Facebook?
Yep. Uh, you do your Facebook and Local Live at the same time?
Yeah, we can do, we can do that, we can also add YouTube if you want.
Um, yes, all, well, it really needs to end up on our district YouTube, so it's whatever's most efficient for Lori.
Um, yeah, I don't know what she ends up grabbing, she might just take my DVD, I'm not sure.
Okay, so why don't you just do Local Live and Facebook for now?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, cheers.
So Hatton, do you want, excuse me, do you want, just before the meeting starts, to explain to people how to open up chat?
Sure thing.
And all that stuff, or do you want me to?
Um, I'm happy to do it, whatever, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Okay, if you just want to explain what to have open and when to mute and.
Oh, I'm, I'm joining the board meeting on.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Oh, okay, no, okay.
Hey Rob. Hey Rob, just letting you know, I'll do the quick orientation about the controls, um, at the bottom of the screen for people and then Marcia will kick off the meeting.
Thanks Hatton.
And I've got the flag to share too when we get to that part.
Thank you.
Yeah, I borrowed it from Lenora for my Quanis Board meeting, so thank you Lenora.
Uh, Ray, you look like you're in the jungle.
I was playing around with backgrounds, you caught me.
Fancy.
That's, I can't get the virtual to work, so that's why I've got an avatar. Hi Isis.
Hi Chair Holland.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
I'm just gonna go back on mute for a bit while we make sure people get connected.
Hey Ron, if you can hear me, this is Hatton, I just want to confirm that we want to go with the regular speaker view rather than the gallery view for your broadcasts.
Are you talking to MCAT?
Yeah, so I know we've gone back and forth about whether or not you show the grid view or the gallery view or just the individual speaker view, um, for the MCAT broadcast.
I thought in Zoom I didn't have that control anymore.
Um, you should, in the upper right-hand corner, you can toggle between speaker view or gallery view, it looks like a little, um, tic-tac-toe board. Um, but it, it defaults to the normal regular view, so you can just leave it set to that.
Yeah, it just tells me grid view is not running on this page.
Perfect.
So I don't have that app.
That's alright, we'll just leave it alone.
Okay.
Alrighty, welcome folks that are here.
We should be coming up on Facebook in half a minute.
We've got Trustee Wake, Trustee Holland, Trustee McDonald. I thought we had Trustee Decker for a moment there, we don't, uh, we have student trustee Ball. Uh, we're gonna start the livestream with a holding screen in just a moment and then in a couple more minutes, I'll start the recording.
Sounds good, and remember to mute your mics unless you're speaking, just so we don't pick up background noises or any telephone ringing or anything like that. Or Hatton can mute us all.
That's the other fun thing about Zoom.
Hey Jeff, could you let me know how to pronounce your last name so I don't mispronounce it? If you don't, if you can unmute yourself for now. Um, your mic doesn't seem to be working. And I can hear Jeff, our incoming trustee.
So Jeff, you're unmuted, but for some reason we're not picking up your audio, um, we can see your mouth moving, we just can't hear you. You may want to try plugging in headphones. Do you have like, maybe, uh, cellphone headphones or anything like that that might have a microphone with them? Oh, you're gonna call in, okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Jen, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi Abe, how you doing?
Hi, maybe I can get my video, uh, here.
Uh, trustee Vogel, we can hear you, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna mute.
Okay, for everybody on the call, I'm just letting you know I'm gonna start the recording now, we also have the livestream going with just a holding screen on our Facebook page.
Hello, can you guys hear me now?
Is that Abe, or is that Dave?
This is Jeff.
Oh Jeff, sorry, there's three people. We can hear you now Jeff, how do I pronounce your last name? This is my.
It's, it's Av Garrett.
Good, thank you so much.
Okay, Chair Holland, uh, we're at six o'clock and so far I see yourself, trustee Lorenzen, trustee McDonald, trustee Newbold, trustee Sturbis, trustee Vogel, trustee Wake, as well as student trustee Morrow, student trustee Ball, student trustee Johnson, and student trustee Odegaard.
Okay, and I just got a text from trustee Kendall, their wifi is out in her location, so she's going to try to figure out a different way to connect.
Great, and trustee Decker is joining right now.
Okay.
Alrighty, I'm gonna welcome everyone to this Board of Trustees meeting and give you a brief orientation to Zoom and then Chair Holland will officially start the meeting. I see trustee Old Person is here too, thank you very much, I overlooked that. Um, in Zoom, if you hover over the bottom of your screen, take your cursor to the bottom of your screen, you'll notice a couple of controls. At the point that you'd like to be recognized to raise your hand and make comment, you can click on the little button that says participants. When you click on that, you'll see something open on the right-hand side of your screen and at the bottom you have a few choices and one of those is raise hand. So if you need to be acknowledged by the chair, that's how you'll raise your hand. Just to the right of that button on the main screen is a little icon that looks like a thought bubble and it says the word chat. If you click on that, it will allow you to type a chat into the participants in the meeting. You can choose to chat everyone, or you can choose to chat just one person. This meeting is being recorded and it is being livestreamed. Welcome trustee Kendall, I see that you are here.
Thank you.
If there's any participants who are joining us via phone, you have two sets of controls. If you press star six, you can mute and unmute yourself. If you press star nine, you can raise your hand to be acknowledged for a comment. With those basic instructions, I'll turn it over to Chair Holland to start the meeting.
Starting meeting myself, okay, I will call the meeting of the Zola County Public Schools Board for May 12th to order, and the first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order to welcome everyone who is participating in this virtual fashion and to take roles. So, please bear with me since I will take roles by calling out names, um, trustee Decker, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
I am here, trustee Kendall?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Lorenzen?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Newbold?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Old Person?
I'm here.
Trustee Smith? I didn't think I'd seen trustee Smith in yet, trustee Sturbis?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Vogel?
I'm here.
Trustee Wade?
I'm here.
And I will acknowledge that incoming trustees, um, trustee Mercer is also here and trustee, uh, incoming trustee Av Garrett is also here. And then I will identify the student trustees, um, so I can make sure that I know you're all here, um. Fiona, are you here?
I'm here.
Isis?
I'm here.
Abe?
Yep, I'm here.
Isaac?
I'm here too.
Claire? And Eric, they were going to try to participate, I texted and talked with them earlier, so hopefully they will be able to get on. And Mara, I know is having some trouble with the internet access from Willard. So, with that being said, I've taken role, so if everyone can stand and will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Watson, do you mind starting us out?
I, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we come to item number three, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. I had one question for Pat, under nine A three, is that still an action item?
I'm just pulling it up.
Ratify consent to petition for approval of the division of the real estate in Washington?
Oh, thank you, yes, so the, uh, the board approved that today. So, the only, I'm sorry, the court approved that today, so the, um, the only reason to ratify it would be that we had sent the consent in, but there's, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next item, question is, does anyone want to revise the agenda in any other fashion? I'm not seeing anyone typing in chat or any hands being raised. So the next. So the next action item is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular meeting of April 14th, 2020. First, are there any modifications to the minutes as were contained in the package? I'm not seeing anyone indicating thus. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April 14th Board?
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, trustee Old Person has seconded the motion. All those in favor, please type in by typing in why or yes. And for trustee Vogel on the phone, please unmute and just vote yes or no.
Vogel is yes.
Thanks. Let me double check. And that is approved unanimously as to all trustees present. And I don't see that trustee Smith is present yet. Okay, so now we will move on to public comment on non-agenda items. So for those in the public, bear with me when I just get a little bit of a script so that I make sure I explain the procedure properly. So we will take public comment on non-agenda items, items that won't be discussed at the beginning and end of the meeting. During the regular board meeting, we will be taking public comment on non-agenda items at both the beginning and the end. And then we'll take public comment on agenda items in the normal fashion, where after there's been board discussion on agenda items, then we will take public comment on that agenda item. That includes information and action items. And so as Hatton had indicated, you can either raise your hand with clicking on the little blue raise hand. You can unmute your phone and Hatton will help me keep track of that because there's a pretty long list. Or you can chat in or indicate in the chat button that you'd like to make public comment and then Hatton will ask you to unmute your phone. And if you're on a, unmute your mic and if you're on a phone, she will remind you how to unmute your phone. That being said, is there any public comment on any non-agenda item? I'm just checking. I don't see any blue hands raised. I don't see any requests in chat. And Hatton, do you see any? I've looked down the list and the only people unmuted are people that I think just haven't muted their phones yet. So I don't think there's any public comment at this time on non-agenda items. So let me get back to my agenda. So written correspondence and written public comment is available on MCPs website. And so we move on to item number six, which is exciting for me, although a bit bittersweet. We are recognizing the student trustees for 2019, 2020. So from Big Sky High School, it's Fiona Morrow and Isis Ball. From Hellgate High School, it's Abe Johnson. From Sealy Swan High School, it's Claire Kovach and Eric Lorenz. In Sentinel High School is Isaac Odegaard. And at Willard Alternative High School, it's Mayor Otterman. And as the student trustees know, I've been in contact with most of them. I have either delivered or will be delivering your certificates of appreciation and taking a picture of you in front of your schools so that we will be able to commemorate that we got to say thank you to you on our website. And I know Claire and Eric were going to work on getting a video or a picture taken of them up at Sealy. So just first of all, thank you for your service. It's in normal times. It's an amazing thing that our trustees, student trustees are always so reliable. But in these few months, it's been even more amazing that they've been able to stay in touch with us and me in particular. So I really, me personally, want to thank you so much for everything you've done for the district. And I know I speak for all the trustees in thanking you for your service. And there are comments being written in chats, so you can look at those as well to know how appreciated you have been. And with that being said, we can give you a round of applause. And then we will move on to your reports. And so if you have a report to give, go ahead. I will call you by school. And one thing I would ask, if there's any pieces of information that you've learned from classmates or friends or parents in school about graduation, in case you can't stay on the call until we get to that agenda item and you have some information you'd like to pass along, we'd love to hear it now. But there is also going to be an information discussion later. But I know all of you probably can't stay till that part into the meeting. So let's start with Hellgate just randomly. So Abe, do you have a report for us?
Um, well, I wish I had more. I had surgery a couple of weeks ago, so I've been a bit out of it. But, um, you know, we're kind of just trying to take things as they come with graduation, which is one of the responsibilities for Student Gov, which me and the president, me being the vice president, had quite a bit to do for graduation. Now it's a little bit more unclear, but we're still working on putting together slideshows for the seniors and recognizing certain people who received awards and whatnot. At graduation, unfortunately, we don't have a speaker now, but we are planning on having our senior class president and our class president speak. But we're kind of just taking things as they come and we're meeting weekly with our advisor, Melissa Hen Thorne, trying to figure things out. I wish I had more, but that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Abe, and I hope your surgery went well. And I congratulate you on what's coming up this summer. I know you're heading to New York and to West Point.
Yeah, thank you. This has been an awesome experience and yeah, I'm grateful. And I learned a lot. So thank you. Thank you all.
Yep, and feel free to jump off if you need to.
Yeah, I can stay a little longer, but yeah.
Okay, and Isis and Fiona, I don't know if you want to split or share it, your reports, but however you want to work it out, just go ahead and unmute.
Isis, do you want to cover senior news since I don't really know much about what's going on there?
Yeah, I can cover seniors. As far as seniors at Big Sky, it's been really interesting, the development over graduation and all that. We have been informed that we will be having in-person graduation, which I know for me and a lot of others, that's been really, really good to hear, however, in however form they choose to do that, that we are really excited to still have that experience as seniors. We are all, we are all charging towards that deadline for our senior projects. And I know everyone's just really, really excited for us to finally graduate and have that chance, even with pandemic and everything going on. It's been a really large learning curve for us and I know everyone's really just taking it in stride.
Thanks. And Fiona, did you want to add anything from the rest, the perspective of other students?
Yeah, so if you didn't realize, I'm a junior. But so for seniors, work will be, they'll stop getting assignments on the 21st and for underclassmen, we'll stop receiving assignments on the 29th of May. They're starting end-of-year checkout soon, so they're dividing it into four different days by last name for students to come and get things out of their lockers. They're also setting out standards and trying to determine how they'll finish out grades for the year. I know that there's been like a little bit of debate about pass fail for different classes, but we have a lot of different programs that we're trying to figure out. Right now, teachers are all just working together to make sure that students are making it to the end of the year and getting everything that they need.
Well, congratulations to you both at Big Sky. I know in addition to everything else going on, you've been through a construction year at Big Sky as well. So thank you for your patience on several fronts. And I know Abe had lived, I think, most of his junior year, probably sophomore year with construction going on. So thanks to you. And then we'll move on to Sentinel and Isaac, who's also lived through construction and a pandemic. So Isaac, do you have a report from Sentinel?
Yes, I do. And I got a lot of different notes from different teachers and departments this time, so it's gonna be a long report, just so you know.
Okay.
So here we go. Hello, everyone. I hope you've all been doing well over the past month. Though we haven't been able to get back into school, Sentinel has been as busy as ever, especially with the end of the year approaching. Sorry, I lost my place. AP tests started yesterday and will continue through the end of next week. Each test has been shortened to take about 50 minutes with the removal of multiple choice questions and some written response questions. This is due to the inability to hold tests at a supervised location this year. Sentinel's AP Research students will submit their research papers to the College Board on May 26th. These papers serve as their AP tests and are their final step for the students to receive their AP capstone diplomas. The papers cover a variety of topics from salience theory and paradox of choice in economics to climate grief. Next year, 60 Sentinel students are registered for AP capstone courses, marking a 300% increase from year one of the program. Another academic achievement for Sentinel students comes from the National Council for Women in Technology, who selected both Maya Lee and Bailey Sostrom as Montana winners of their Award for Aspirations in Computing. Bailey Sostrom was also a national honorable mention for the award. Their teacher, Dan Landy, was also honored as the 2020 Montana Educator of the Year. In other student activity, Sentinel's speech and debaters who qualified for Nationals are still going to compete online. In total, eight students are competing and we wish them all luck in this unusual competition. Aside from normal classes and homework, here are some other interesting things Sentinel students have been doing during quarantine. The Civil Engineering and Architecture students at Sentinel are studying water resourcing and treatment in the Missoula Valley and will finish with a virtual tour of the Missoula wastewater treatment facility and an engineering design challenge to build innovative mobile water treatment filtering devices. Also, students in Sentinel's dual-credit film class have each completed their individual film short finals. Each film showed the students' personality and their creativity in making the film. Sentinel's wood students have been using their skills in building trades at home and in the area around where they live. They have completed many large projects, including roofing and landscaping, as well as remodeling basements and building chicken coops. Despite the inability to work in class together, our yearbook students have finished the 2020 yearbook and are now working on finding ways to efficiently distribute them. They would like to make sure each and every member of this class of 2020 gets a yearbook to remember their high school experience. The Life Skills Department has been holding a weekly activity hour every Friday. Each week has a different theme, including sharing your pet, superheroes, two truths and one lie, physical activities, and an art showcase. Admin, life skills teachers, parent educators, CSCT, speech therapists, and students have all been a part of these activity hours. Sentinel student governments, students finished another year of being lunchtime playground buddies with the Lewis and Clark Elementary students. Every Thursday during the school year, Student Gov students went to Lewis and Clark to spend their lunch on the playground with the elementary students. Usually, the Student Gov members finish the year by helping out with the field day at Lewis and Clark in June, but it won't be possible this year. This is the third year of the Playground Buddies Program and the high school students have enjoyed it just as much as the elementary students. The Sentinel Counseling Department has been very busy during the closure, emailing, calling, and Google meeting with students and helping them to learn and stay engaged in remote learning. They have also been doing a few home visits where they deliver Chromebooks and paper materials for students to use. They are still wearing masks and staying six feet away during these home visits and are going in pairs. Counselors have also been working on next year's schedule and remotely attending meetings together. Sentinel's social worker has also been very busy helping families in our community get the resources they need during this time. Also, Sentinel would like to congratulate our science teacher, Lindsay Monzo, who is a 2020 recipient of the Murdoch Grant. Monzo submitted her application utilizing a climate-controlled greenhouse for cross-curricular plant slash food research and received $10,000 to fund the project. During the past few weeks, Sentinel's Facebook page has been posting bios of seniors from the class of 2020, as well as the Sentinel Booster Club. Also, signs have been put up in front of Sentinel thanking teachers and faculty for their work and recognizing class of 2020 for their accomplishments. You can drive by and see them anytime. And now, since this will be my last report, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to serve in this position and for considering my input during your meetings. This has been a really great experience for me and I hope you all have enjoyed it as much as I have. The next student trustee has not been appointed yet, but I hope to be able to introduce them at the May 26th meeting. Now, as we begin to slowly come out of quarantine, I hope that you are all doing well and continue to stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac, and thank you, Abe. Thank you, Fiona. Thank you, Isis. I think we somehow weren't able to connect up with Claire and Eric. I just looked and didn't see that they were on the line. And I do know from talking with Kevin Richlin at Willard that Mara was having some technical difficulties in getting to the meeting tonight. But I just want to thank you all again for what a stellar job you've done this year and for powering through what none of us expected the end of this year to look like, to say the least. So I'm sure you'll be hearing, if you can't stay through the meeting to hear about graduation, it will be shared with your building leaders. And I know your leader's in the building, so you will be finding that out as well. So thank you again. And if anyone needs to get going, that's perfectly understandable. But we will now move on to the high school activity report. It's in the packet on page 16. It's the report for winter 2019, 2020. And there is no oral report. So then we move on to 7C, which are announcements from Dr. Watson.
Okay, thank you, Chair Holland. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words this evening. First of all, just like to say thank you to our student trustees. I think trustee Holland said it best when, when she said that you've added a lot to our meetings and you've definitely been, it's been very informative for me as the, as the new superintendent to just hear what's going on in your schools and hear things from a student perspective. I've appreciated that very much. So I do appreciate the student trustees for their time and their dedication to this process. We have some new trustees as well, Jen and Jeff and Cone, and I'd just say welcome to our meeting this evening. And if we were in person, we could welcome you more appropriately, but we'll do the best we can in, in this virtual format. I also just would just take a minute and send my appreciation to trustee Newbold and trustee Kendall for their many, many years of service. I think each have, have served six years, which is just amazing to me. A lot of people don't realize this, but this is, there's no money for this, right? So this is a volunteer job and I always like to say that because you think about the amount of time that our trustees give up to dedicate to our district and they do so, both Jennifer and Heidi did so because they, they appreciate education. They're supporters of, of public education. They really do appreciate our staff and they're, they're, they think very highly of our teaching staff. I know that for sure in talking with them. And so Jennifer and Heidi, we will, we will really miss you and your service on this board. On behalf of the entire school district and all of our staff, I would just say thank you to trustee Newbold and trustee Kendall for, for their many years of service. And you still have a little bit more to go tonight, but I, I just want to say thanks for all that you've done for our district. And let's see, there is one more thing. Okay, so in the personnel report this evening, you will see a recommendation from me for an appointment of the Assistant Superintendent. And just want to remind the Board that in a meeting before spring break, we talked about the reorganization of our school district and it's something that we spent a long time as staff working on. And, and we, we did, even though we were in a virtual format, we did continue with that process. We actually, I pulled together a cross-section of stakeholders from our district, teachers and principals classified, and some other central office folks. And we, we actually did conduct a search and some interviews, some virtual interviews for the Assistant Superintendent. Happy to report that we, we selected Russ Lodge as my recommendation. And Russ is a name that some of you may remember. Russ did work in our district for a time and he's spent the last few years in Washington State working as an elementary principal. Here in Missoula, he not only worked in our district, he also worked in Target Range for a short time. But in our district, he, he worked at Russell Elementary and Hellgate High School. but in our district, he worked at Russell Elementary and Hellgate High School. And what I really appreciate is just the wealth of experience that Russ brings to this position. So I just wanted to point that out. That's in the personnel report this evening and we'll have a chance to introduce Russ at a future meeting. So let's see, I think there were four things. The only other thing I would mention is many of you may recall that in past years, we have done a most inspiring student ceremony this time of year and we are continuing with that in a virtual format. We're going to have the most inspiring student virtual ceremony next Monday at noon. And principals across our district have nominated students for that award and we will recognize them in a virtual way next Monday at noon. And with that, I think I'm going to stop. Thanks.
Thank you, and we will be recognizing both outgoing and incoming trustees at the end of the meeting as well. So basically, hold your applause until then. And now we move on to 8A1, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 2422 proficiency. It was presented for review and discussion at the April 14th meeting and it was approved at the first reading and posted for public comment. As the background indicates, no public comment has been received. And so the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 2422. Is there a motion to do though? Trustee Wake has moved to do so. Is there a second? Just looking to see and chat if there's a second. Oh, and from trustee McDonald has seconded the motion. Is there any board discussion? We did discuss it in pretty significant depth at the first reading. Is there any discussion from any board member? Please let me know by intercating in chat or raising your hand in whatever fashion you want to. Not seeing anything, then all trustees in favor of adopting Board Policy 2422, please indicate yes, a yes vote by typing in why or yes and a no vote by no. And trustee Vogel, if you can let us know what your vote is.
Vogel is yes.
Let me just catch up. And that passes unanimously as to all trustees present. Now we move on to 9A1. I see that Stephanie Fries from Anderson Zermulon is also here. And as you recall, we were going to consider this at the last meeting, but Stephanie was not able to attend. So we thank you for rescheduling and taking the time to do the presentation. As you know, the recommendation is that we accept the audit report as presented because that's the mechanism by which we recognize the audit report. So with that, I'll go on mute and I will let Stephanie. Well, Pat, do you want to introduce Stephanie first? And you just, you let me know how to proceed.
Sure, just briefly. And before introducing Stephanie, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dan Parrish, who is also on the line, and the folks here in the business building, the bookkeepers in particular, who worked in supporting the auditors and supporting the audit process. So thank you to Dan and our staff here in the business building. And with that, I would turn it over to Stephanie and appreciate her attendance here virtually. And she has a document that she'd like to share. It's our comparison or her comparison that she makes among the other double A districts. So thank you, Stephanie, and take it away.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize that I had to cancel at the last minute of the last meeting. I ended up with a family emergency, so thank you for having me back today. I want to share my screen to go over a few things that I'd like to cover in the audit report. And let's see here, oops, sorry. Technical difficulties. I always get more nervous when I'm doing a presentation on Zoom for some reason than I do when I'm in person. So well, first of all, I think you all have a copy and I know there's a link in the board packet for the audited financial statements. And I'm going to just quickly kind of go through those to let you know what the different sections of the audit report are. And then we will cover the auditor's opinions and stuff kind of towards the end. But as you can see on the screen, the first thing that I want to point out is that our audit opinion is on page six of the PDF that you received and it's page one through three of the paper copy of the financial statements. But I think we all have PDFs anymore. The opinion is at the top of the second page and again, I'll cover that shortly. And one section I always like to point out, especially to new trustees to read is the management discussion and analysis. Most of this is written by Dan and Pat and their staff and it's a good overview of what's in the financial statement. It compares the current year to the prior year. And so this audit report covers through June 30th of 19, so it compares to June 30th of 18. And then it gives the economic highlights of the district, et cetera. So of the whole financial statement, I think this is the most user-friendly part for you to go through and read. If you, you know, want to go to sleep one night, basically, I guess. So then the main financial statements start on page 21 of the PDF and it starts with the statement in that position. And this statement is on the full accrual basis of accounting. So that means we take basically your fund financial statements and we include your capital assets into these statements. And we also include the long-term debt, which is, you know, both of those are not included on your fund financial statements. And we also accrue any other liabilities within that, those government-wide financial statements. These present both the current year and the prior year, so they're a good overview. Again, this is summarized in that MDNA section that I pointed out earlier. Then the fund statements start on page 24 of the PDF and those cover your general fund. That's always a major fund for all governments. And then it goes through a formula to determine what the other major funds are. And because of the bonds and the construction, your elementary building and your high school building are major funds of the district. And then it aggregates all the rest of your funds into the non-major governmental fund category. These are presented on the modified accrual basis, so there are no capital assets or long-term debt within these. And these are more as they're presented to you probably in your trustees packet on your monthly meetings. Then after your governmental funds, you do have your internal service fund for your health insurance and then fiduciary fund, which is your private purpose trust and your agency funds. And again, these, the internal service funds and the fiduciary funds are all on the full accrual basis of accounting. Then your footnotes start on page 33 and this gives you more detail on, you know, information behind the numbers. For those that are pretty familiar with the financial statements, there really were no new footnotes this year. The district did adopt one new accounting policy, which was Gatsby Statement Number 88. And that did include an update to certain disclosures related to debt, but it was mostly on direct borrowing, so there really was no effect on your financial statements. But it is adopted, so in the future, if you were to get a direct loan from intercap loan or a bank, or, you know, then there would be additional disclosures that would be required. Another section that I think is really important or interesting for trustees to see is the statistical section and that starts on page 90 of the PDF. And just to flip through a couple of those, because it is some pretty good information and it gives at least 10 years' worth of information. And that, the first one is the A and B for the district for both the elementary and the high school district for the last 10 years. And as you can see, and we'll cover this a little bit when I go over the financial trends report that I'll bring up here shortly, is the district's A and B did increase significantly last fall by about 252 students. And so that was about almost a 3% increase from the prior year. And really the largest growth in the last several years. And then there's a table on the school district valuations. Let's flip through this really quick on the mill levies, the district tax levies, and then the other tax levies within the district. You know, so some good information and I know a lot of times when you are going for bonding, that the bond agents will look at a lot of these statistical tables and if they're in your report, it saves them time and so they really do appreciate that. And then on page 99 of the PDF is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And this is the federal grants that the district received, the amount that they spent in 2019. And if we flip to the last part of the second page, Missoula spent about $9.2 million of federal awards. You're required to have a single audit anytime you spend over $750,000. So you're significantly over that and we will cover the single audit requirements here in a minute. But then the next auditor's reports start on page 102. And this is the auditor's report that's required anytime we do an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And the difference between generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards are, in government auditing standards, we're required to gain an understanding of your internal controls over your financial reporting and we would be required to report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your internal controls. We're not required to test internal controls, although we do have to do what we call walkthrough procedures where if management tells us this is a control that they have implemented, we walk through that control to make sure we see evidence that it has been implemented. So we don't just take management's word over what they're doing. We do make sure that that's what they're doing, if it's a significant control. And then we're also required to test compliance with any laws or regulations that could be, that non-compliance could have a direct or material effect on your financial statements. So the compliance that we test is over state laws that cover school districts. We also test over grant requirements, bond requirements, if there's covenants over those bonds, some federal laws over payroll and those kinds of things. And I'll cover the results of those testings here shortly. Then on page 104 of the PDF is the auditor's report over the single audit or compliance that's required by uniform guidance. And this is over your federal grant. And we are required to give an opinion on your compliance with the requirements over the uniform guidance. And I'm happy to report that we gave you an unmodified or clean opinion over each of your major programs' compliance with the federal laws. We are also required for the single audit to not only gain an understanding of your internal controls over compliance, but we are required to test those internal control policies and procedures. And again, we would be required to report any findings of significance or material weaknesses. And as I'll show here shortly, I'm happy to report that we had no findings of weaknesses in your internal control system over your single audit. And so I kind of brushed through that a little bit, but I'm going to, on page 106 is the summary of everything that auditors report on. And so I thought this would be a good report just to go through that real briefly in that the audit opinion that we're giving you over your financial statements is an unmodified, clean opinion on your financial statements. And we had no instances of material weaknesses on your internal controls and we had no significant deficiencies. And I'm happy to report that we had found no instances of non-compliance that was direct or material to your financial statements. Over your federal grant, again, I'm happy to report that we have an unmodified, clean opinion and there were no internal control findings reported either and no non-compliance with those federal requirements. We don't test compliance with every grant that you have. We go through a risk process where every year the grants are assessed to determine which ones are your major program. And this year in 2019, we tested the special education grants and the career and the technical education grant. So there were no financial statement findings and there were no federal award findings. We're also required to give a status update on prior findings. And last year, the district had three findings in their audit report and I'm happy to report that in testing those again, that in the current year, the corrective action that the district said they were going to do, all that was implemented and those findings were cleared and we had no further findings on those. So that is good news there. There is some additional communication we're required to give to governance. Let me see if I can increase the size. Too big now. So we already talked about implementation of Gatsby 88. I'm also required to let you know that in completing the audit, we look at all significant transactions and we noted them that were unusual in nature or that lacked appropriate authorization or documentation. In order to prepare the financial statements, management does have to make some estimates. The significant estimates that the district has to make is evaluation of the incurred but unpaid claims in your self-insurance fund. And that estimate is prepared using what's called a leg report or a report from your third-party administrators, letting the district know which claims have been turned in after you're in but have not been paid yet. And so that one is a fairly easy estimate to test. Another significant estimate is your other post-employment benefit estimate. As you're aware, the district has to hire an actuary to calculate that liability and they have to go through that study every two years. So again, good support that's given to the district on how to, the amount to record for that liability. And again, fairly easy for us to audit that because of getting that actuarial report. And the same with the pension liabilities, which are a significant liability for the district. The state pension plan hired the actuary. Those reports are audited. Those reports are audited by the legislative audit division of state government. And then those reports are provided to the district to record that liability and for us to audit. So we get some good help in making sure that management's estimates are accurate. And we have no changes to those, how those were recorded in the district's financial statements. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit. And we received everything that we asked for on our request for information from the district and from management in a timely manner. And so we really want to thank Dan and Pat, reiterate what Pat said at the beginning of the session. Dan and Pat and the staff have, you know, have significant workflows of their day-to-day life that they have to deal with. And then we come in for a couple of weeks and totally interrupt that workflow. And they were very gracious and helped us get through the audit timely and efficiently. And so I really want to thank them for all their work on that. And then we do request representation from management that they have provided all the information that we have requested. That, that they haven't held anything back or not provided information to us to help in completing the audit. And then the last thing I want to go over is the financial trends that I usually prepare for the district. Let me see if I can increase that just a little bit. For those of you that have been with the trustees for a while, this will look familiar for the new trustees. What, this is a benchmark report that I prepare. And basically it, it has four years' worth of information for the school district, Missoula School District. And so I think it gives you a good look at how things have changed within the school district. And then I also compare that to several, if not all of the other double A schools in Montana. Just to kind of, I think it highlights a few things and it, it's. It provides some curiosity if nothing else and things to look into maybe in the future endeavors. But I'll go over this briefly, but if you've got questions, I'm happy to answer those. I did email that to Pat. So you know, if you would like a copy of it, please feel free to ask him or I can provide it for you. But so the first section and this information here is on the government-wide or full accrual financial statements. And it is on your assets within the district. And as you can see, your capital assets make up about 64% of the assets of the district. So a significant investment of the district is on your buildings and, and anything over your capitalization policy amount. Your cash and investments are at a healthy 28%. As you can see, those have gone up and down as you sold bonds for your different projects. That you've had over the last few years. And so the last bond sale, you know, was in 2018. And now you've spent down quite a bit of those proceeds and so you can see that up and down. The highlighted things in pink are just some things that I thought would, were of interest to point out within. Either within the Missoula School District or for other districts. And as we can see, Great Falls School District, about 53% of their assets are in cash and investments. And, and they had a bond issuance this last year. And as you can see, their capital assets are significantly less than, for example, Missoula Public School District. And, and to me, that speaks that they have not had projects for quite a while within that district. And so being able to pass that bond project and strengthen some of their infrastructure, I think. Is a really good thing for that school district now. Also, Butte had, has some projects in the works and they issued some bonds this last year. So, so their cash and investments are higher. And as we can see, their capital assets are really aging out. And as we depreciate those capital assets, of course, the value goes down. And so that kind of speaks to the age of their capital assets. And then the next section is your liability section within your statement of net assets. And as we can see, for Missoula Public School District, your long-term debt is your most significant liability, which makes sense. That's the bond payable cap, that also includes. Well, no, I was gonna misspeak there, that is just your bonds payable. Your current liabilities are really consistent from year to year as we can see. A little bit higher in 18 and 19, but that would speak to the projects, capital projects that you have going on. That would be your accounts payable, vendor payables. But as we can see, 4%, that's fairly consistent across all the districts. If we look at long-term debt, it's 60% for Missoula School District. We look at Bozeman School Districts and it's as high as 71% their long-term debt. So they've had significant bond issuances and, and projects that, you know, as we know of the new high school. And, and the new schools that they've had to build or have built. If we look at the pension liability, that's held pretty consistent for Missoula Public School District at 29% over the four-year period. If we look at billings, public schools, it's as much as 49%. And the difference there included in their pension liability is volunteer and, or voluntary termination payable. They've got a significant amount of liability for termination, voluntary termination payable. And so that really makes up the difference in why theirs is so much higher. If we look at the OPEB liability, it's again, that is your other post-employment benefits for your health insurance. Because your retirees are on your health plan. Even though they paid COBRA for the premium because it's a blended premium. It's not age-based premium. Nationally theoretically, they consider that you're subsidizing those retirees premiums. Because statistically, as you get older, you know, you cost more into a healthcare system. So, but for Missoula, that's held real consistent and fairly consistent across most of the other school districts. Billings is a little bit higher. If we look at Butte, I just circled this one because that's considerably higher. And to me, that speaks to some of their union contracts that they've got. And the health insurance benefits that they provide are significantly more expensive in that district than in the other districts. The net asset section, the only thing I really wanted to point out for new trustees. As we can, we can see that your unrestricted net assets are a deficit. But we can see across all districts, that is the case. And that is because of the huge unfunded pension liability for TRS and PERS. And before that, that standard was adopted, you had a very strong unrestricted fund balance. The next section covers then the fund balances. I should have said unrestricted net assets up here because that's the full accrual. Here's your fund balance, fund balances for your modified accrual. And the only thing I wanted to point out is the restricted fund balances. And that would be restrictions for proceeds for your, your bond issuances. Because that's restricted to your projects. That would include debt service fund balances because that's restricted to your debt service. And it would also include any fund balances in your miscellaneous funds that are restricted for different grant programs. And it's, it's, you know, it, it kind of goes up by district. But it's, they're all within, you know, a pretty comparable percentage of their fund balance. And then right here, I include what your general fund balance is. Because I think of that as your operating fund to an extent. And then this percentage is the percentage of the general fund to the total fund balance for the district. And as we can see, Missoula and Bozeman are real consistent on their general fund. But they are considerably lower than some of the other districts. That is not really an indication of anything negative. Just how you've, you know, basically how the district has chosen to set their budgets, et cetera. On the next page, we'll look at your cash reserves. And those are in a really good spot. So again, just because the general fund balance as a percentage of your total is lower. You also have to consider that within this restriction, you've got all your bond proceeds. So that would skew that percentage and that would be the same for Bozeman also. And then next, I kind of covered the revenues of the district. And this is on the government-wide or full accrual revenues. And there's really not considerable differences within the different districts. And pretty consider, or pretty even trending across Missoula districts. So no real changes to point out. I highlighted the state funding. There are some differences here. A few districts have a little bit higher percent of state funding compared to total revenues. And I added a new benchmark that we can kind of watch on that down below here on the next page. And so that's what, the only reason that I highlighted that right now. And so as we flip to the next page, we cover the expenses of the district by function and compare those. And you know, the mission of instructing, of instruction, you guys spend the majority of your revenue, of your expenses on instruction, which makes sense. You have very strong and favorable percentage there. Higher than Bozeman, right in line, I would say with the rest of them. A few are a little bit higher in, in some of these category, or in some, you know, but, but right in line there. I look at support services and administration costs for Calispell. And for some reason, they didn't break out administration separately from support. So that highlights that, you know, we can look at these and, and something might jump out of like, why is this higher? But really, management does have some discretion on how they choose to categorize an expense within a function. And so there could be differences just in philosophy between, you know, staff within the business office of how they're, they categorize these things. But if we look at percentages here, Calispell's at 20%. You know, Missoula, Bozeman are at 21%. They're all within about 21%, 20 to 21% for supporting services and administration. Nothing really jumped out different. If I look at these on how the percentage of the costs. We've talked about this last year where Missoula does have a little bit higher percentage for your student transportation. And I know, I apologize, I, I already can't remember the exact reason. But it was something back in, in history of how you have chosen to run that program. So, but it's still not out of line, you know, just a little bit higher than some of the other districts. Interest and fiscal charges are pretty consistent. Bozeman has the highest cost for interest cost, which makes sense since they have the, the largest outstanding debt within all the districts. And then we trend out the fall enrollment compared to the other districts in the state. And this one, I think is fairly interesting. And this is the cost per student, just a, a simple calculation of. I took the, take the total expenditures or expenses of the district divided by the A and B. And this is the fall A and B every year that we show. And it's held pretty consistent for Missoula. It is up a little bit this last year, but not considerably. And if we look across the other districts, it's in line with Bozeman. Little bit higher than some of these others, but they're not significantly different per district. This is the one I added this year just because I'm interested and I want to dig into this a little bit more. Excuse me, of the state funding revenue per district per student. And it's been fairly consistent for Missoula Public School District. And not out of line with any of the other districts. Helena, Calispell and Great Falls gets a little bit more state revenue per student. And you know, some of that is definitely based on poverty level within the districts. But just interesting that I'm gonna dig into that a little bit more just for my own case. We do not audit Helena or Calispell. We do do the audit for Great Falls, so I'll have some good information that I can dig into there. And then finally, the cash and investment or cash reserves for the district. This does not include any cash reserves for the bond issuance or what's in the capital project funds or the debt service funds. It's held very consistent for, across the years for Missoula School District. Which is a little bit lower than some of the other school districts, except for Calispell is the same. But, but it is a little bit lower and you know, that could be, there, there could be a number of reasons for that. It's still a healthy reserve. And so nothing that I am concerned about by any means, but just something to, to be aware of. That it is a little bit lower than some of the other districts. And that's really all I had to cover. I, I know a lot of information I threw out there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Stephanie, if you can take, you're sharing the screen down. It helps me to see if people have questions. Thanks. So let me get back into chat. I don't, does any trustee have a question for Stephanie? I'm not see, oh, okay, no questions, just off. Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees, that there's a motion that the trustees accept the audit report as presented for the fiscal year 2019. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by, I mean, catch up, moved by. I don't see a motion, I only see a second, is there a motion? Oh, there it is. Oh, Grace has moved, or trustee Decker has moved, seconded by trustee Oldperson to accept the audit report. Is there any board discussion? Not seeing any hands being raised or anything in chat other than thanks. And so I too would want to echo that. Thank you to Pat, thank you to Dan, thank you to your staff at the business office, thank you to Stephanie. This is not easy stuff and we really appreciate that. We like finding out that we are good stewards of our district's financial situation. So thank you for everything that it takes. So thank you for everything that it takes to make sure that that stays, that that's where we stay. So thank you to everyone. And I don't know if anyone has a comment. Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Not seeing any hands go up or anything in chat. So all those trustees in favor of accepting the audit report, please type yes or y in chat. And trustee Vogel, if you can let us know if you vote yes or no.
Vogel votes yes.
Thank you. And so the motion to accept the audit report passes unanimously. And now, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn back to student trustee reports. Eric and Claire were having troubles finding the Zoom invite, so I sent it to them and sent them the password. So I think they're still here. Are you there, Claire and Eric?
Yes.
Oh, yay. Nice to see you. Eric, are you there?
Yes, I'm here too. How's it going?
Good. And so we're kind of going to do things in, in the same order as they appeared earlier in the agenda. First, I want to thank you for all that both of you have done representing your school as student trustees on the board. As I mentioned in my texts to you, we are sending you your certificates of appreciation and your name tags, so you can show everyone you were a student trustee at some point in your life. And especially, we were sad because we would have, until everything happened, we would have been up in Sealy for our spring meeting and had a chance to say, you know, thank you to you in person, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. So I just want to make sure that you get a round of applause from everybody here, virtually or otherwise. So thank you so much. And then I don't know if you've prepared any short remarks or anything, but if you, you have, we'd love to hear from you. And if you, you know, are just ready for school to be done, that's fine too. So I'll leave it to you both to decide if you want to say a few words.
Well, thank you very, oh, sorry Claire.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. You know, I'd just like to say thank you to the school board and, you know, all the staff. I know you guys work so hard to keep the school running and the school district going. And thank you. It's really a hard time right now.
It is. Anything you'd like to say, Claire?
No, I would just like to second what Eric said. It's, it's a pretty cool honor to be a part of this and we thank you for all your hard work in making us a part of this. And I don't think we have anything to report on just because we haven't been at school. So other than that, thank you.
Thank you. And I will let you know, I talked with your principal via text and he told me that if I send you a little gift card for the ice cream place, that would be appreciated. So that will be, and thanks to your principal for letting me know that there is a good place to get some ice cream at Sealy. So thank you very much. And if you need to get going, I know it's a kind of a school night, so feel free to leave whenever you want. And I think the conversation about your graduation looks a little different than the graduations for the bigger schools in Missoula. But hopefully, your principal's sharing ideas with you because I'm sure you're both in leadership positions in school too. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. And so with that, we'll move on to 9A2, which is to ratify the FEMA Public Assistance Application and Designation of Application Agent. And Pat, you're going to explain this. There's a fairly lengthy background explanation about how to apply for these applications. So if you want to let us know a little bit more detail about it. And then the recommendation is that the trustees ratify the filing of the Public Assistance Application and Designation of Applicant Agent.
Yes, thank you. So the, the funds are available for emergency protective services to protect health and safety. And government entities are encouraged to apply, which we did. And the application is, is very simple and, and we're just asking the trustees to, to ratify the application, which gives us access to the portal for applying for funds. What I, I would mention is that there's really strong likelihood that we wouldn't qualify for funds under the, under FEMA. And the, the likely expenditures that we could qualify for involve cleaning supplies, but our obligation would be to spend the funds we receive through the Department of Education first. Those would be those funds under the CARE Act that are distributed through the Department of Ed to OPI. So we, we filed the application to keep our options open and we would come back to the board with any opportunities for funding through the FEMA portal. But at this time, I'd say that the chances are probably pretty remote that we would have, we would qualify for funding.
So if I can summarize, it's a good thing to apply for, or send in the application and designate the applicant agent on the chance we would get it. And as we, in a parallel situation, we were able to get a grant up in Sealy that fit well with Sealy. So this is an attempt to see if we might be able to fit under the standards for this particular application. Is that more or less?
Yeah, so that's exactly correct. And unlike the Sealy application, this one really requires a little effort on our behalf other than to monitor our expenses and then, and then work through the portal. So the Montana Department of Emergency and Disaster has really been a helpful organization. So we'll stay in contact with them and, and work with them if any opportunities arise.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions for Pat about this action item? I'm not seeing hands. Let me check on the second page. Not seeing any blue hands. I'm not seeing any notes in chat. So the recommendation is that there is a motion to ratify the filing of the Public Assistance Application and Designation of Applicant Agent. Is there such a motion? Just looking in chat. Or if someone wants to unmute and just make a motion? Trustee Kendall has made, has moved to do so. Is there a second? And trustee Newbold has seconded the motion. Is there any board discussion? Not seeing hands or requests in chat. I will make one comment. Thank you, Pat, for keeping on top of these opportunities. We don't know whether we will necessarily qualify, but it, it certainly doesn't hurt to try. So thank you to you and your staff for, for doing so. Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of the motion to ratify the filing of the Public Assistance Application and Designation of Applicant Agent, please type yes or y. And trustee Vogel, if you can unmute and let us know if you vote yes or no.
Vogel is yes.
Let me just double check. Yes, so the vote is unanimous in support of the motion. So thank you. Now we move on to what Pat and I have decided is what the strictest law professor's third year law school's final in wills, trusts, and estates look like. And I think Jennifer would probably agree. So it's pretty complicated and just bear with Pat because in the end, it, it's make, it's a pretty simple ask that this request is being made. But Pat, if you want to try to explain it as best you can?
You bet. And I'll try to be brief. The, at the end of the day, the, the school district, both the elementary and the high school district are residual beneficiaries of Carl Larson's estate. And the one district is a 3% residual beneficiary and the others are 2%. And Carl decided in Culbertson and passed away recently with property that he and his wife and son owned in Washington State. They own that property as joint tenants. Subsequent deed broke up the joint tenancy when Rosemary was, was ill and then created a question of whether or not Carl, the decedent, owned a two-thirds interest as a tenant in common or a one-third interest in joint tenancy with Bruce and a one-third interest and a as a tenant in common. So the, the, the attorney for the personal representatives petitioned the court in Culbertson to approve or consent to a division of the property that would convey a one, one half of the estate's interest, which would amount to a one-third interest to Bruce, his, his son and lawful heir. Bruce is under guardianship care and, and his guardian's attorney was filing a claim in Washington State. So this was an effort to avoid litigation in Washington. The end result was the, the court approved the consent to division and distribution of the joint tenancy interest to, to Bruce, the decedent's son. And then kept one-third interest in the estate as part of the estate assets, which will be, the proceeds will be divided and distributed, distributed. And our districts, the elementary and high school, would receive a, a small share from that distribution totaling about $8,500. And then there are other assets of the estate would be, which would be further distributed to the benefit of the district and the elementary and the high school. So the, the Larson's, Rosemary Larson was a teacher in the district and both her and her husband were obviously strong supporters of education. The list of beneficiaries included the University of Montana Western, the law school that, that Bruce had attended and as well as a, a number of non-for-profits and educational institutions. And, and we were just one of the long list of those beneficiaries. So fortunate that they would think of our district and their estate planning. And we're just asking the board to ratify our filing of that consent, which really amounts to nothing more than that ratification for the filing since the, the board or the, excuse me, the court took action today and consented or approved the, the division and, and the sale of that property. Hopefully that's clear as mud. I'll answer any questions.
So who wants to try to get an A on this final? Any questions, anybody? So if I understand it, Pat, the bottom line is this is a way to allow the money from the proceeds from the Washington property to be distributed to their son, who now needs financial support. And the court okayed that today and we consent documentation in that the board had also indicated that we would, let's see, ratify the administration's consent to the petition submitted by the attorney for the estate. Is that a rap?
Exactly right. I, I signed and filed the consent and, and made it subject to board ratification tonight. And it would be basically that message to the attorney that the board ratified the consent that I filed earlier in the, or later at, at the end of last week.
Any other questions? I'm just looking to make sure there. Not seeing any hands raised or anything in chat. So recommendation, my paperwork is that there is a motion to ratify the administration's consent to the petition submitted for, to the attorney for the, is it, let me get the name, the Larson estate? Is there a motion to do so? Trustee Decker has moved and so I will assume trustee Renssens is a second. So we have a seconded motion. Is there any board discussion? I will add one comment. Thanks again for sorting through this, Pat. It really is one of the most complicated, you know, third-year law student finals I've ever seen. So thank you very much for working through all of this so that we could understand it and move forward with this. Anyone else? Any public comment on this? Not some, just double check. I don't see any hands raised. And I don't see anything in chat. So all trustees in favor of the motion that's on the table to ratify the administration's consent to the petition, please indicate by typing in yes.
Vogel is a yes.
Thank you. Let me check again. And it is yes as to all trustees present. And I do need to clarify for the minutes that I got a text from trustee Wake and she lost her internet connection. And so she did not vote on the last motion. So it was unanimous as to all trustees present, but did not include trustee Smith and trustee Wake. And the same is true on this. It is unanimous as to all trustees present, but did not include trustee Smith or trustee Wake. So we just can clarify the motion. And so she, she's trying to get access again, I think. So with that being said, we're on to two related items under four and five, which are to approve the Beach Transportation Memorandum of Agreement, which Pat and Burley will explain. And then the parallel approved the Conley Transportation Memorandum of Agreement of Understanding, sorry, not of agreement, Memorandum of Understanding, which is as to the Sealy Swan Transportation Company. So Pat, you start out and then you want to turn it on, turn it over to Burley?
I, I think I can do, or if anything comes up, I'll ask Burley to jump in. But so the, this obviously arose out of the COVID-19 closures, this MOU. We contract with Beach for a specific number of days that are linked to our calendar. So these are 180 days of contracted busing services. And so they build their budget based upon that contracted schedule, including the variety of expenses that you'd expect in operating a, a busing company. We have a provision as referenced in the MOU that, that exists within the agreement that, that provides for, for payment of a portion of the, the contracted rate in the event of a cancellation by the district. And that provision was, excuse me, my automatic light went off. So that cancellation was put in place in the agreement, really arising out of severe weather cancellations, given the financial impact. So the provision itself provides for 61% payment. Beach approached us and requested additional coverage, given the length of the cancellation. And from our standpoint, we were interested in ensuring the support of, of their staff and particularly their bus drivers who support our school transportation so well. And so the, the memorandum of agreement, it provides for the full route payment for the 18 routes that are used to deliver food. So these are 18 bus drivers that show up with our staff every day to deliver, deliver food. And those 18 bus routes are treated as regular routes under our contract. The remaining 76 routes are, are, would then be paid out at a percentage of the, the actual rate cost. And that rate cost under the MOU references Schedule One, and you'll see that on, the MOU is on page 19. And it references item numbers one, three, four, five, six, and nine from the underlying agreement. And those specific item numbers are your regular and special ed routes. They include the aides for the bus attendants. They include the special ed shuttle services, excess hourly rates, excess mileage rates, and the shuttle service. So it's, it's all to and from transportation services that we're supporting. And really, the, from our standpoint, it's important for us to ensure that the, the staff, the bus drivers are ready to roll when school resumes. And, and so we're asking the board that they, that they support this MOU. we're asking the board that they, that they support this MOU for a, an enhanced payment of cancellation fee during this COVID-19 closure.
Does anyone have any questions for Pat?
It looks like trustee Decker does.
Okay, thanks. I didn't catch that trustee Decker.
Thanks. It's a little confusing and hard to, it's hard for me to understand how it's working with which routes are, are continuing to be paid because they're delivering food. But then it looks like most routes are not. But we are continuing, I'm looking at the whereas is under the recitals and it looks like we're paying 61% of the, what's called the fixed costs. But it looks like Beach is not actually paying the drivers who would be operating those routes normally. And so I'm curious, I, I know that it's not really our job to be on the inside of how Beach does its business, but I would be concerned if we were paying a high amount of, of a rate and and that weren't landing in people's income in some, if, if that was a significant part of what we're usually paying for.
Yes, thank you. So, so the recitals, which there are many of, they're just stating sort of the facts that exist right now. And that fact would include the 61% that covers fixed costs. So I'm just restating how the agreement reads now. Then if you go to page two of the agreement, which is on page 20 of the agenda, you'll see that, that under, under the contractor's commitment, number three is that they're required to serve the agreement, including bus drivers of routes established in schedule one, aides, mechanics, office staff. So, so that there is confusion. I, I appreciate it because the recitals aren't really saying necessarily what we're agreeing to. They're saying what the facts are in place now. And then the commitment by Beach is that they keep their bus drivers who serve those routes paid. And, and that's the reference there to the, to the established routes identified in schedule one. And that's pulling language right from the contract. The distinction is that this would not address activity routes. And so those are activity routes. Our bus transportation fund doesn't cover activity routes that's done through the schools, through the, the general fund. And so Beach is, you know, they're on their own with respect to that component and paying that staff. But they are, they have very loyal employees and, and they're also committed to paying their staff. So I, I would expect that, that they'll do right by those folks. But for sure, trustee Decker, that was a focus of ours is to make sure that the bus drivers were included in the pay because it's important that they're ready to roll when school, school resumes next fall, hopefully next fall. Great question.
Thanks.
Anyone else with a question? Let me double check. Looking for blue hands or unmuted phones? Or anyone in chat? Seeing none. And let me grab this. The recommendation is that there is a motion from the, a motion to approve the attached memorandum of understanding with Beach Transportation. Is there such a motion? Trustee Lorenzen has moved to do so. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Let me double check on hands raised? Or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Decker has her hand raised. Thank you.
Thanks. I guess it's just a comment. I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's your perception, Pat, that, that keeping bus drivers employed through this crisis and also into next year's is priority and, and was considered in putting together the, the contract. It's my understanding that those are hard positions to, to fill at times. And that they're sometimes looking even as the school does ramp up. And we've talked about as a board that we may need more bus routes if we're going to manage some amount of staggered entry to school or differentiation of schedules or something to make social distancing continue. So certainly making sure that we have a cadre of bus drivers who are not only, you know, ready to go, but, but ideally experienced people because implementing new protocols on the bus about safety and sanitation and keeping kids distant from each other and how you handle the bus. I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot more to it. So it really would be a shame to lose people for the future, let alone to let, leave them hanging in the meantime. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other board discussion or comments? Not, let me double check on the other screen. Don't see any other hands raised or anyone in chat. Is there any public comment on this? I'll double check to see if any hands are raised. I'm not seeing anything in chat. So all trustees in favor of the motion on the floor, please indicate yes for, by typing in yes or why or no by typing in N or no. And trustee Vogel, if you can let us know how you vote. And I don't know if trustee Wake has been
Vogel, yep.
Thank you. And trustee Wake, could we bonus? I, I don't see her. So
I don't have trustee Wake back in the meeting at this point.
Okay. So let me just make sure. So trustee old person is abstaining. And it is unanimous as to all other trustees present. And I'm going to type my yes in twice, perhaps twice because I can't remember if I voted. So it is unanimous as to all trustees present except for trustee old person who is abstaining from voting. So thank you. And then we move on to a similar item, which is to approve the Conley Transportation Memorandum of Understanding. And Pat or Burley, if you want to let us know about Conley.
You bet. So thank you, Chair Holland. The there's no MOU to attach. So I just have the, the terms which essentially mirror the beach transportation terms. We only have two routes and Sealy. And right now we have a route that's being used to deliver food. And then that route would be paid at the full 100% of the contracted rate. And then the other route, which isn't delivering food, would be paid at that 70%. We would implement similar provisions to the MOU that we have with Beach, which would include expectations of staff pay. And also include a term, this, this would only last through the COVID closure period. We would start anew in the fall. And so both parties would have opportunity to negotiate a, a change in, in terms. So this is for this, this, the end of this, this contract year. So we're hoping the board would approve the terms that, that I'm talking about and authorize an MOU based upon those terms as consistent with the, the beach MOU.
Are there any questions for Pat? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that there is a motion to authorize an MOU with Conley Transportation that is similar to the beach MOU, but under the terms described in the section identified as background in our agenda. Is there such a motion? Let me just check in chat. Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? We just look for blue hands. I'm not seeing any indication of, of board comment or discussion. Is there any public comment on this? And again, I'm not seeing any indication of public comment. So all trustees in favor of the motion to authorize the MOU with Conley Transportation under the terms described in our agenda, which is similar to the beach memorandum, memorandum of understanding, please indicate by voting yes or why?
Vogel is a yes?
Oh, there we go. I, I just, now it is unanimous as to all trustees present. And I believe that trustee Smith and trustee Wake are still not present at the meeting. I, I have trustee Wake's phone number. She's going to try to call in, but I don't see it showing up yet. So that would be unanimous as to all trustees present. And thanks for working out those details, Pat and Burley. Then we move on to approving the purchase of student staff device replacements. I know that Ray had given us a heads up that this would be coming when she gave us our, her report last month. So if you want to walk us through what, what it's generally going to look like, we do see this every spring typically, I think, for replacement because everything's on a cycle. So if you just want to walk us through, you know, if there's additional information beyond that, which is included in the background information or that you want to highlight. Thanks.
Sure. Um, yes, this is something that you see every spring, usually a little bit earlier than this, but thanks to COVID, we've pushed it back just a bit. Our, all of our devices in the district are on a five-year replacement cycle. So this year we have a large number of staff devices to replace. And then a lot of our student device replacements are Chromebooks. So I use the NASPO Montana purchasing agreement. I email vendors. I emailed eight vendors this time. And I have a sneaking suspicion that due to the pandemic, not as many vendors were able to submit quotes this year. But Information Technology Corp. Is the vendor that we have used the last few years. They submitted a very reasonable quote. Their prices looked very similar to last year, which is good news for us. Chromebooks went up a few dollars, but that was just due to Google itself raising prices across the board. So things were very comparable to last year's prices and ITC is a very great vendor to work with. They're based in Missoula. So this year we're going to be purchasing 1,315 devices for a total of $538,162. And I should mention there are some, there are 70 iPads and a handful of, of Mac, MacBooks in there. And those are not purchased through Information Technology Corp. Those are purchased directly from Apple.
Any trustee questions for Ray? Let me just check on both pages. Oh, trustee Decker has a question.
Thanks. I always raise my real hand instead of my blue. So
I accept any hand that
Um, my question is that if we are ordering devices, it, was there any thought put into whether we might want to order more than usual this year to support what might need to consider being, you know, ramping up online and remote learning over the next year as well? Like if we're going to make a big order, is there, you know, more, more buying power in just adding more onto this?
That's a great question. Um, there's not more buying power if we buy more Chromebooks. It's kind of that, that set price. But I did, and I failed to mention it in my little spiel that I gave. I am purchasing 150 Chromebooks just in case we have damaged or lost devices that we've already put out for this year's remote learning. I don't think we're going to have 150 devices damaged. So that was a very, that was a very large number. So those devices will definitely be available if we do go into remote learning next year. And then we will have all of the laptops that we've loaned out. We have about 700 of them right now. So if most of those come out, we'll have about 900 devices ready to go for remote learning and what, what's already in the schools.
Any other questions for Ray? Looking for hands? Regular or blue or comment chat? Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that there is a motion to approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements from Information Technology Corp. For $538,162. And as is explained there for a total of 1,315 devices. Is there such a motion? Let me catch up. I gotta scroll up. It's moved by trustee Sturbis and seconded by trustee old person. Is there any board discussion? I'm not seeing any indication. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any indication. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of the student and staff device replacements for the amount that I was included in the motion, please indicate by typing in yes or why? And all those opposed type in N or no. And trustee Vogel, if you can let us know. Sorry.
Vogel is a yes.
Thank you.
Is it possible that Marcia is muted?
No, I'm, I'm not muted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't seeing trustee Newbold, whether she had voted. So I'm just trying, okay. Yes, she did vote and trustee McDonald voted. So it is unanimous as to all trustees present. Turn my page. Now we move on to three, actually four somewhat related items, which are to approve personnel reports, approve reelection of tenured and non-tenured teachers, approve termination of non-tenured teachers and approve reelection of specialists. And so I guess we'll start with the first one, which is to approve the personnel report. It's found beginning on page 22. And as the trustees know, we don't comment on any particular individuals listed in the report. But Dave can take questions and then we can make general comments if we'd like to during board discussion. So Dave, anything to point out about personnel report that's found in the packet?
Um, no, the personnel report is the typical monthly report that shows resignations, hires, leaves that have been granted. And I think as Rob pointed out at the beginning, you know, for example, the hiring of the new assistant superintendent.
Any questions for Dave? Not seeing any indication. Then the recommendation is that there is, let me get it. A motion to approve the items on the provided personnel report. Is there such a motion? It's moved by trustee Kendall. Is there, and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion in a general nature? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? And again, the same caveat applies. We don't comment on individuals in the report, but we take public comment generally on the personnel report. Not seeing any indication. Please indicate if you vote yes by typing in Y or yes. And if you vote no, please type in N or no. And trustee Vogel?
Vogel is a yes?
Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. Okay, it looks like it's unanimous as to all trustees present. So we move on to B2, which is reelection of tenured and non-tenured teachers. If you want to explain what this action captures?
Yes, every spring, two and three are related. We are required by statute to notify teachers and our tenured staff of reelection, the non-tenured teacher reelection by June 1st. And in three, likewise, we are required to give notice of termination of any non-tenured teachers by June 1st. Those reports, the B2 starts on page 29, and I guess we'll stop with that before we get to three.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. The recommendation is that the trustees reelect the tenured and non-tenured teachers identified by the Human Resources Office in the personnel report. And there is an attachment, or there is a document that would reflect who those teachers are, right, Dave?
That's correct. The exciting part is after tonight, we'll be sending about 700 plus letters and contracts out to teachers starting tomorrow morning.
Okay. So is there a motion to do so? Just looking in chat, trustee Kendall has moved to do so, and trustee Old Person has seconded it. So is there any board discussion? Just let me check the second page. Not seeing any. So all trustees in favor of the motion, please type in yes or why. All those opposed, no or N. And trustee Vogel?
Vogel is a yes.
Just a sec. I'm just checking to see if trustee McDonald has voted. Trustee McDonald, if you have voted, could you vote one more time in chat so I can capture it? Thank you so much. So it is unanimous as to all trustees present, and thank you for your patience scrolling up and down. I have to make sure I'm looking at the current motion on the table when counting the number of yeses. So thank you for your patience. Now we move on to B3, which is termination of non-tenured teachers. And Dave, do you want to, is there anything you need to add to what you had just said or what is included in the background information?
No, it would be, I wouldn't have anything to add to the background information. These are just non-tenured teachers that due to either late hire staff reductions or budget issues are non-renewed.
Any questions for Dave? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. This is obviously just in general terms, but, and it's totally possible that I'm just not remembering because we do see reports that are similar. But I don't remember the language about late hire staff reductions and budget uncertainties being part of the non-tenured terminations before. Is that a change or is that the way that this is usually put every year?
It's how it's normally put every year. Oftentimes, you see the termination of non-tenured teachers embedded in throughout the year when we are doing a temporary hire, and then that teacher is terminated upon the return of the teacher to their position. So for example, a teacher that might go out on paternity leave, we hire a long-term substitute, and then we terminate them. But this is the more comprehensive once a year that reflects all of the reasons.
Any other questions from any trustees?
I have a question.
Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess in general, then, do you have a sense of, for example, how big our kindergarten class is? Are we, do you think we're going to lose kids because they'll stay with homeschooling? Because there's still so much fear around the fall? Anything like that? Are we kind of clearing the decks just in case we have an enrollment drop? Does that make sense?
That's a great question. We have not moved or adjusted our staffing for this fall based on that. We are moving forward as if with our full staffing, as if those numbers that we have this year will continue on into next year.
Any other questions? Let me check on the second page. See no indication.
Marcia, I had a question. Sorry, I tried to raise my hand in the chat.
Okay.
I also am struggling to remember this section, and so just have a general question also about, I was glancing at the list and seeing that some of those positions are things like title positions or special education positions, kind of important positions. But how do you determine? I'm assuming there are a number of non-tenured teachers in our district. How do we make a determination as to the non-tenured teachers that won't be reelected? Is it based on number of students served? Is it based on seniority? Can you just elaborate a little bit in a general sense on that process?
I know we don't like to talk about the specifics, and so that list of the teachers could be for a variety of different reasons, and so they don't all fit into one clean category. So we do, sometimes it's title dollars. We wait until the end, until we know what allocations are going to be. So sometimes that wouldn't be the reason for the delay. Sometimes you're just simply hired late, and that's the why. They're not, so there could be a variety of different reasons. There isn't one that fits any, that fits all of them.
Are there, excuse me, any other questions for Dave? Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that there is a motion to, or that there's a motion to terminate the non-tenured teachers identified by the Human Resources Office in the personnel report. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Second by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Then is there any public comment? And so for Ms. Blue, she has made a comment in chat, and I'll read it out loud because we are keeping chat as part of our record, but I'll allow it to be out in, so others attending the meeting can read it. It indicated, "Thank you for your thoughtful questions. They are reflective of those our staff ask and important to go into the record." She indicated that the reason she asked me to read it and typed it out is because she has pets at her house that are barking like crazy. So thank you, Ms. Blue, for those public comments. Is there any other public comment? Either raising a hand of any kind or typing into chat?
Trustee Decker has a comment.
Okay. Trustee Decker? I thought we already did trustee comments.
Her hand is raised. Let me fix that.
Oh. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
So no other public comments. So all trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by typing yes. I'll try to count.
Vogel is a yes.
Trustee Wake, yeah. Did you get that? Trustee Wake, yes?
Oh, thank you, trustee Wake, yes. So I'm seeing, let me, I'm seeing trustee McDonald, old person, Kendall, Newbold, Decker, and I forgot to hit send. And me, Wake, and Vogel is, did I miss trustee Old Person? No, I think it's unanimous as to all trustees present. Sorry, it's just a little bit, it's a small chat box right now. So thank you very much for your patience again. And then we move on to number four, which is reelection of specialists. And Dave, do you want to explain specialists being reelected?
Yeah, we have those separated out. The specialists that are located on page 39 are not really falling under title 20s, teachers, speech pathologists, the nurses. But we, they are under the teacher's contract under the CBA, and so we like to have a board action to reelect them for the next year as well.
Thanks. Any questions of Dave, given that information? Looking to see. Not seeing any indications. So the recommendation is that there is a motion, excuse me, to reelect specialists identified by the Human Resources Office in the personnel report. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Service. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by trustee Lorenzen and also trustee Wake. So all trustees in favor of the motion? Please indicate by typing in Y or yes.
Trustee Wake, yes.
Thank you.
And Vogel is a yes.
And it looks like it's unanimous. It's unanimous as to all trustees present, it looks like. If I just, let me double check, sorry. Yes, it's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to an information item, which is the topic of what graduation 2020 might look at, look like this year. So I will turn it over to you, Rob. And I don't know if you have other people participating in the discussion. And this, for all those listening or participating in the public, this is information only. So we will have information provided by Dr. Watson and perhaps others in the administration, and we will have board discussion, and then we will take public comment after the board discussion. And then there isn't an action item, but we would like to hear from the public if you have any thoughts after you've heard what the current various scenarios are. So thank you for being present, and I'll mute myself, Dr. Watson, and turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Holland. I just appreciate the opportunity to discuss this this evening. I know that graduation ceremonies are an important piece of our program, and what we do to celebrate our graduates is important, not only for me, but for all of our teachers and our parents, and as well as for the trustees. I know you're something that you look forward to every year, celebrating our graduates. So we, we actually have been talking about this for a number of weeks, and we were getting lots of great suggestions, not only from students, but also from parents. The only thing we were really waiting on to sort of finalize some of our planning was guidance from the Health Department, and we received that guidance last Friday in, by way of an order from the County Health Officer. And so that was helpful because it really narrowed down our scope a little bit and helped us plan this a little better. So I did put in the agenda the actual formal health order. If you want to read that, you're more than welcome to, but I'm just going to go through some of the highlights, and then I want to skip to some of the planning things that we're, that we're thinking about. So first of all, you know, we could, we could do graduation in a number of different ways. At one point in time, we were talking about virtual-only ceremonies. When we, when we were still in the stay-at-put, stay-put order or stay-at-home order, we talked about doing pure virtual ceremonies, which is still an option. If for some reason there was a spike in cases and we went back into stay-put order, then we obviously would have to move a different direction with graduation. But based on what, what the Health Department knows right now and the current numbers that are out there, they are comfortable releasing some guidelines for graduation, and I'll just go over a few of those. Obviously, they, they support, they allow in-person ceremonies. Any ceremony that we have, we have to, we have to be cognizant and careful of social distancing, which means six-foot physical distance between graduates and six-foot physical distance between any guests that might be in attendance. The Health Department also has set a limit on the number of people that could be in any one gathering, and so that limit is 250 people. That includes not only the students, but any guests and any volunteers that are there to help support the graduates with the graduation ceremony. In total, it has to be 250 people. That's one of the other requirements from the Health Department. They also want to make sure that we think about procedures, entrance and exit procedures, monitoring guests as they're lining up to enter the venue, making sure they're six feet apart. Same thing with graduates as they line up to enter the venue, make sure they're six feet apart. So some of those things. As far as face coverings, they recommend face coverings, not required, but they do recommend face coverings for staff, volunteers, students, and guests. And then the last thing that they'll say is that the Health Department is allowing this to happen. We have to submit a proposal of how we think it'll happen, and then the Health Department can give us feedback on that proposal and sign off basically on the graduation ceremony. At the same time, they also reserve the right to scale it back or to suggest some other method in case we go into a more restrictive environment in the future. So with that, I just want to highlight a few things. We sent out a letter to our seniors and our parents last Friday afternoon, and I think the letter had some things in there that were probably relevant to this discussion. So one of the things we talked about is knowing that there, that an in-person ceremony could only have 250 people total. What would that look like? I just want to preface by saying that Seeley Swan High School and Willard probably will look different because they can live within that 250 and actually have, you know, more of a traditional ceremony. So we're working with Willard and Seeley Swan separately. Obviously, there will still be precautions in place, but they, they have a little bit more leeway. Seeley has about 19 graduates this year, and Willard has about 65 graduates this year. So both of those schools are, are planning out some ceremonies and sharing those with their, with their students and their parents, and those ceremonies will likely look different than the three large high schools, which, which is understandable. Even in the past, those ceremonies have looked different. So what I want to focus on briefly is just what the three large high schools, what their ceremonies might look like in an in-person ceremony, and then just answer any questions to get your feedbacks. So for the three large urban high schools, those classes, those, those senior class sizes are pretty close to 250, if not over 250. So it would be impossible to have all the students there, plus guests, plus the volunteers, and stay within 250. That would just be impossible. So what we're considering are three, are breaking apart those graduating classes into three smaller groups. So you could have 80 graduates, two guests, and about 10 volunteers, and you'd be right at 250. So that's kind of what we're thinking about, is breaking apart those large classes at the three urban high schools into three smaller groups and running those three smaller ceremonies all on the same day, which means we're going to have to spread out the ceremonies. So we would have, you know, one high school on one day, the next high school on the next day, and the third high school on the third day. And each high school would have three ceremonies on those given days. So that's, that's one of the proposals that we've, we've talked about. The other thing that we've chatted about is just what would happen at the ceremony. Obviously, we would spread the graduates out. The guests would come in, separate entrance. They would be in a different location. We would spread the guests out to make sure they're six feet apart. Folks would be wearing masks. The traditional things about high school ceremonies, which we're all familiar with, would look different. So for example, as the kids come up on the stage, the diplomas would be laid out on a table, so there wouldn't be any transferring of diplomas. We would lay the diplomas on the table. The student would pick it up. Wouldn't be any traditional handshaking and those sorts of things, and the students would move on their way. So we would still have things like some speeches, some pre-recorded music, but the ceremony would be very much abridged. We're trying We're trying to get these ceremonies down to about forty-five minutes each so that we can hold three ceremonies during the day. And then between ceremonies, we would give ourselves enough time to make sure the venue was cleaned, sanitize any restrooms or anything else that needs to be sanitized before the next group shows up. So the other thing I think is probably important that you're aware of is that obviously, we want this to be a safe environment for our kids. We believe that the in-person thing is, the in-person ceremony is really what they want. We also believe that each student would like a few guests there. And that's why we went to this notion of eighty students and two guests. We realized that two guests will be really, really hard to manage for families and we understand that. We also will live stream. I think MCAT has agreed to help us with this, to live stream the graduations so that for family members that can't be there in person, they could watch it at home. So not ideal, not perfect, not, definitely not what we've done in the past. But it still gives the graduates that in-person ceremony that they're, that they're hoping for with a lot of precautions in place around social distancing and, and those sorts of things. We will send out some precautions ahead of time. One of the things we'll ask is that graduates and their guests not, not have traveled for fourteen days prior to the ceremony, not have traveled out of state for sure. And then the other thing we will ask is that if they have guests that are in those high risk categories, that they not invite those guests. So if they have grandparents, for example, rather than inviting grandparents, invite somebody else that may not be in a high risk category. So we're going to send out some of that general guidance ahead of time so that families understand what it's going to look like, what the expectations will be. And we're hoping for, for a really nice ceremony or several ceremonies. We've, we've explored a number of different venues. And I know that's a question on a lot of people's minds is if it's inside or outside, does it really matter? Obviously, being outside helps us with social distancing, but we're still capped at that two hundred and fifty number. So even if we're outside, we can't go over two fifty. Being outside really helps with sort of exits and entrances and keeping people separate. So we've explored a couple of different outside venues. Obviously, in the past, we've done it at the Adams Center. The Adams Center is an option, but it's very large and we don't know if we would need that big of a venue if we're going to split the ceremony into three different groups. So the Adams Center is an option, but we are also exploring other venues. And so we're just trying to nail this down this week. My intention would be to send our final plan to the Health Department no later than Friday. They've asked for some leeway to make sure that they can look through our plan and approve it before the first ceremony. And then just a word about Seeley, Seeley Swan and Willard. Seeley is planning a similar thing, probably in their gymnasium. They would have probably, like I said, nineteen graduates, a few more guests, maybe four guests per graduate, staff members. Obviously, they'll be well below the two fifty number. But because it's in their gymnasium, we also need to make sure that we've got social distancing. And so we, we have to have a low enough number that we can social distance in their gymnasium. So Seeley is looking at that sort of option, nineteen graduates, about, you know, four guests per graduate and some staff members in their gymnasium. Willard is looking at a variety of different things. One of the things they're looking at is multiple ceremonies spread out over a couple of days, perhaps bringing in small groups of kids with their families and going through a ceremony with a small group of kids, honoring them, moving on and then having them exit, move on to another group later. So I think Willard ceremonies will be, will be good and they'll be very individualized to Willard. But they'll look obviously much different than our, than our large ceremonies at the three high schools. So I talked about the venues, I talked about the, the limits. I've talked about some of the precautions that we will put in place. And then I, I would just say we're, we're going to be very flexible. So at the last, you know, at the last second, if we had a spike in cases in Missoula and for some reason we needed to pull back, we certainly can do that. One of the other things we've talked about is sort of a walking ceremony where kids would walk through or drive through and receive their diploma with their family. So if we need to scale back, we certainly can do so. But what we'd like to do is proceed forward, like I said, with these smaller ceremonies staying under the two fifty number. So with that, I think what I would really appreciate from the board members this evening is just some feedback, some thoughts, some things you think we need to think about that maybe I haven't thought about. And any, any other comments you can give me before we submit our final plan.
So as I indicated, we'll have board questions or comments or things you'd like Dr. Watson to think about. And then we'll take public comment after all the trustees have made their comments or suggestions. So any person who wants to raise trustee Decker has her hand up and then just, you know, write in chat if you want to get in the queue for having questions for Dr. Watson. So trustee Decker?
Thanks. My question is related to the staff who will be participating in the ceremonies and any plans that might be in place to make sure that staff, including yourself, Dr. Watson and cabinet members and principals are, are not themselves going to be interacting with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people over the course of multiple ceremonies. I'm wondering how we're going to manage to hand out diplomas in a, a fashion that feels formal and obviously official, but doesn't put any of our staff in harm's way.
Yeah, great question. Some of the precautions I think are inherent to the plan. So with two hundred and forty, I mentioned earlier, I mentioned eighty graduates, two guests. That puts it at two forty. That doesn't leave a whole lot of room for extra people. When I do my quick math, we would have the principal, myself, probably one board member. And we can, we can alternate between the various ceremonies. Because if you think about it, three high schools, three days, we're going to have basically nine different ceremonies. And so I wouldn't ask that, we wouldn't have the same board member at all nine ceremonies. We'd have one board member per ceremony, probably. And then what we would do, that, that's three people. We'd have about five school staff there is all. And they would help with ushering and lining up, but there wouldn't be a whole lot of school staff just because we have to keep it under two fifty. And then we have to have somebody, somebody or some buddies from MCAT and a sound engineer and a photographer. So all that has to stay under two fifty. So there's not a lot of room for extra staff or extra people. What we've all talked about, of course, is the, is the face mask, social distancing. So it's, it's a little hard to picture this, but if you think about what, what it would look like on the stage, we would obviously read the student's name. They would walk across, the diplomas would already be laid out on the table. There wouldn't be any exchanging of, of hands or anything. They would pick up their diploma. We'd probably wave at them, say congratulations and they'd be on their way. But we would again be six foot distancing between ourselves and those, and those folks. I think the benefit will be that other than myself, I think I might, and maybe the folks from MCAT and the sound engineer, we might be the only persons that are there for all nine ceremonies because the other ones will be rotating, the principal will rotate every day and those sorts of things. So we, we do want to keep people safe and obviously we'll keep precautions in place, not, not exchanging a lot of things, trying to keep our, our distance between ourselves and the graduates.
Trustee Kendall had a question, trustee Kendall?
Hi, yeah, I have a, I have two questions. One is, we know that it's a lot safer to be outdoors. Has there been a discussion of an outdoors? And then is there room in there for an official photographer also?
Yeah, so good, good questions. Number one, we have explored a couple of different outdoor venues. That, that has some pros and cons. Our weather today looked really great this afternoon, but this morning it was raining cats and dogs. So outdoor venues will be tricky, but I, I think we've, we've, we've found one that's, that's, that's pretty good. We're just working out the details. And as soon as we've worked out those details, I'll announce that venue to the, to the district. But we found an outdoor venue that seems to have good access and, and good ways for us to run our protocols and, and keep folks safe. So I'm excited about that. What we'll likely do is say to folks that, you know, if, if it's raining, we're going to continue. If there's lightning, obviously we'll stop and move to our cars. But if there's a little bit of rain, we're all from Montana, right? So we'll put our hoods up and we'll continue. And this shit ceremonies will be short. We're going to try to keep them forty-five minutes so that we're not dragging it out if, if it is bad weather. The other thing with regard to photographer, what we don't want, if you're familiar with ceremonies in the past that you've been to at the Adams Center, usually there's like a cadre of parents that are kind of gathered at the end of the stage, taking pictures as the kids come off the stage. We can't do that in this era of social distancing. So we are going to have one photographer that will take all pictures as kids walk across the stage, a professional photographer that will take their picture as they're, as they pick up their diploma and walk across. And then we'll sell those or he or she will sell those pictures to the, to the students. So that's, that's kind of what we're thinking. And then obviously there'll be opportunities for pictures for parents and other, other locations. But we have to limit the number of pictures at the ceremony right next to the stage. Parents that are sitting in the audience can take as many pictures as they want, but not probably right up next to the stage.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. My question has to do with, with valedictorians and salutatorians and that sort of thing. I'm assuming that we're not having the normal, even without having a normal ceremony, those are the kinds of honors that there are kids who have, you know, worked really, really hard for years, thinking that that might be something they might be able to do. And, and so not only because of the shorter ceremony, but also because of our proficiency-based work and the fact that grades this last quarter have been kind of different. I'm wondering what, if anything, is different about how any of that is getting figured out or acknowledged this year?
Yeah, I can speak to the acknowledgement. I, I don't think that I can answer the other part of your question, which is how does our new grading procedure impact that? I don't think it's going to impact it very much because several of the options we had really had no impact on the GPA. So if a student went into the eighth semester with a four point oh, chances are that nothing that we're doing now is going to really impact that. So I guess I'm not too worried about that, but that's something I'll follow up with, with the principals. With regards to acknowledgement, obviously there's a number of ways to acknowledge those, those kiddos in the program, the actual produced program that we hand out, we would acknowledge them. The thing that the principals have also talked about are recording their speeches for playback. So perhaps your valedictorian happens to be in the nine o'clock program and they're not in the one o'clock program. So you could record the speech ahead of time and still play that speech during the later program in the day. Or you could have the valedictorian stick around for all three ceremonies, those sorts of things to provide that speech. But again, we're trying to limit the number of speeches and, and limit the time. So that's something I'm still working on with the principals.
And Dr. Watson, I recall that each of the schools has a slightly different look, even if it were normal, in that some of, you know, one high school may have the student body president and the class president speaking, not a valedictorian or a salutator. And other classes have, you know, they choose a student to represent the class. So, you know, each school would be able to still make their ceremonies unique in the sense that the way they've been able to do that in the past, I'm guessing.
That is correct. Yep. I think the only caveat there is the, the way the speeches will work. So I know one of the principals talked about, you know, if it is a student body president, perhaps having them present at every ceremony, which makes sense to me.
Okay. Any other questions? Cause I have a few more, but I want to give everyone else a chance. Okay, trustee O'Person.
Dr. Watson, I've been contacted by a lot of families, I'm sure everybody has. And one of the questions I am asked is if we have a contingency plan in case we do move into another phase or our number raises, do we have a plan for that in case it jumps up to five hundred or anything like that? Do we have a plan to do that in case the time comes as we near that date, we can do that?
You're asking if the, if the cap on the, on the total people goes up?
Yeah, to where we can have more people at a ceremony. Cause I know it's a trend for some families to have the whole class together.
Yes, yeah. We certainly can. We can combine these ceremonies if we, if that, if we got to that point. I mean, I think the principals would be okay with that because having multiple ceremonies in a day obviously is going to take a chunk of time and planning and logistics. I, I just want to be really transparent with our community that the likelihood of that actually happening, I think, is pretty slim. And the reason I say that is because the Health Officer spent a long time coming up with that two fifty number. And the likelihood of her raising that in, in the, in the next few weeks, in my mind, is pretty slim. Now, I, I'm not saying it won't happen. I just want to be realistic with our community and I think we need to start planning and working out the logistics with that two fifty number. Because, and I say that because they, they've already canceled a lot of summer programs, summer celebrations that are larger than that. And I don't see her going above that. And the, the governor hasn't set a, a cap, but she has set a cap for Missoula County at two fifty. And the likelihood of, of her going above that in the next three or four weeks, I think is pretty slim. She's already put a, sort of put a stop to a lot of summer stuff that might be happening. She put that, that same two fifty number. She also, she also has given that number to the, the farmer's market. She's also talked to the people that run the, the fair in August and also given them that number. So I think the likelihood of that, of us going beyond two fifty in the next three or four weeks is, is pretty slim. But if for some reason that it did happen, we would, we would be happy to combine some of those ceremonies to make them a little larger.
And just a quick follow-up. So are we even going to ask if she would extend that number for MCPS just for graduation alone? Did we already ask her to or is that going to be a part of the plan or no?
I, I actually have had those conversations with her quite a bit over the last month or so. And we explored lots of different options. We looked at some of the programs that were happening in Butte and Billings where they have larger caps. And I, you know, I explored those options with her. I gave her some scenarios, like if, if we were at seven fifty, what that would look like. Or if we were at a thousand, what that would look like. So I, I believe, I, I believe I gave her lots of different scenarios. And I can tell you for sure that we had lots of rich discussions about it, not only with myself and her, but also some of our community leaders. So I think I mentioned to you on our last meeting that I, I'm on a call three times a week with our, with our mayor and our, and our county commissioners. We also had a pretty in-depth conversation about graduation and cap sizes. And she, this is where she was comfortable. She was not comfortable going over two fifty. Quite frankly, I'm a little surprised that we got to that because for a long time we were at twenty-five and I thought we were going to have to do ceremonies with twenty-five. And for her to go to two fifty, I think it wasn't just the graduations, but also she was trying to figure out a way for the farmer's market to reopen in some sort of fashion. And so that's part of the reason she allowed for two fifty. And she's only allowed for two fifty for those two things right now, for farmer's market and for graduation. So I, I think I've had those in-depth conversations with her. And I think that she's made a decision on two fifty because that's where she feels most comfortable with, with at the time not going over that.
Any questions from other trustees?
I have a question, Marcia.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Vogel.
I had a question about the masks. And I don't expect a discussion about the science underlying this by any stretch. But I was surprised to hear that the Health Department wouldn't require masks. And I wonder if you can share the basic rationale. I don't know if it's an enforcement issue or just by virtue of the social distancing, we wouldn't need to. But that was just kind of a surprising tidbit that you shared.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I, I want to be clear. They, they didn't, they didn't put it in their list of things of expectations or requirements. They put it in a list of highly recommended. So they did allude to that in their plan. And they did tell us, we would highly recommend that number one, you have a backup plan. Number two, you live stream it if you can for those people that can't attend. And then number three, that you require face masks. So that it is part of the Health Department thing, it's just not in their list of, of, of things that, that are required to be part of our plan. They just listed it as a recommendation. We, we have been talking to our staff about that. We're going to supply face masks for our students. We're going to ask that the guests bring their own and we'll have some disposable face masks available for guests that show up and they don't have one. What I, what I, what I want to be real clear about is that this is, this is a ceremony for the students and their two guests. We want to be welcoming in that regard, but we also want to make sure we're safe. So we're going to strongly encourage that. It could become an enforcement issue. And one of the reasons that It could become an enforcement issue. And one of the reasons that. I can tell you, one of the reasons the health department was a little nervous about putting too many. Restrictions on the people that are walking in is, and the health officer even said to me, she said. What I'm worried about is you've got a line of people waiting to get in and now they're not social distancing because you're. You know, trying to figure out if these other people coming in have met the requirements. So. She, she was more in favor of, you know, having some basic requirements, but. Social distancing was the huge one, getting people into the venue safely. Staggering them to get them in safely was more important to her than requiring like temperature checks or face masks or all those things. Face masks are definitely encouraged by the health department. It's encouraged by us. We're going to have them available for people and I, I, I do think that people will use them.
And it looks like trustee Lorenzen has a question.
Yes. What have you talked about for eighth grade promotions?
Yes, thanks. Thank you for that question. Our eighth grade promotions are, are going to be much more virtual. We, when I, the last I've talked to the middle school principals, we would. I think it was alluded to earlier, but we're staggering some pickup days at the end of the year. So that students can come in and drop off, you know, musical instruments or drop off. Equipment and then pick up anything that they may have left behind. During that pickup time, I know our principals will, will be doing some things to honor the eighth graders. We'll also send. A certificate home for those that don't come and pick it up. And then they're doing some other things like videos and. Virtual chats and those sorts of things for the eighth graders, but no, no formal ceremony. It's more, it's more informal.
Any other questions? I have a couple. One, you mentioned the programs. Would the programs be there and. Hand it out in some fashion or would they be mailed home to students instead? Just because usually it's, you're looking to see what the order of things is. And two, related to that, the actual diplomas. I know, for example, Hellgate High School typically doesn't have a real diploma in it. It's just the red cover. The other two schools do. And how, how you keep them ordered on whatever tables. So kids aren't grabbing the wrong ones and then. Running around trying to trade because even under the best of circumstances, that happens at our, our in-person graduations. So I just, I mean, you don't need to answer it now, but I just assume you're going to be thinking about. Some of those things because those are things that people are going to be touching both to unload and touching to load. So I'm thinking people would hopefully be. Using appropriate precautions if they're going to be physically there and students are going to be grabbing them. So not necessarily a question for an answer today.
Yes, thank you. We've talked about all of those things and we have some, we have some plans for those. So I, I, I hear what you're saying and. We want to minimize the confusion around all of this. So we've got some, we've got some plans for all those.
And I guess the second question is, I know we have probably currently reserved to not let go the Adam Center right now. But I, I remember from past years, there, there's an attendant rental cost for the Adam Center that's pretty steep. So. In order to try to utilize that space for smaller groups of people seems like it would. Be very cost ineffective. So I appreciate that you're looking into outdoor venues and everyone can bring an umbrella if we need to. But I appreciate that it's a little bit easier to control and it's, and it also isn't as cost inefficient to the district.
Yeah, I would just say that the Adam Center, obviously we've got it reserved already. We actually have it reserved for multiple days because it takes us a few days to set it up. But if we were going to have ceremonies in there for multiple days, which I think we're going to have to do, then the cost is going to go up.
Any other trustee questions? Looking, oh trustee Decker?
Thanks. It's sort of a question, I guess. It's, it's a little bit of a comment too, which is. If there's any possible way that we can avoid having to sell graduation photos to. To families, that would be fantastic. If we are going to mail diplomas, for example, if there's any way that we can mail a photo along with the diploma or something like that. Be really nice. So that a kid can pick up just a rolled piece of paper that looks like a diploma. But then they actually get their real one in the mail with a photo. And maybe there's a way that we've saved some money over the past few months to be able to front that cost for people. I, I don't even want people to have to ask themselves the question or like forget. To do that step or any of that stuff. It just, it would be such a shame to not have that marked for everybody, for every single kid.
I guess I have a related question. So it will be live streamed, but will it also be recorded? So say if someone wasn't able to live stream, would they be able to go back later and look at it like a grandparent or someone who couldn't be there? Since I know we record, as I see the little red light blinking, our virtual board meetings. So I didn't know. In addition to MCAT live streaming it, if there's a way for someone to watch the ceremony later as opposed to in real time.
Yeah. And I would defer that to Hatton. I think she probably has the most experience with MCAT.
Yeah, it's, it's just a suggestion because I know that's one of the things that happened for U of M's graduation is that. People were looking for ways to, when they couldn't be there to watch their. Students. You know, whatever version of the ceremony that particular department had.
Yep, we can definitely make the live stream a recording that goes on our YouTube. I'm pretty sure we have that. We had to switch over our YouTube account. So last year's graduations are not easy to find on our MCPS communications account right now. That's a YouTube issue. And then if MCAT is still doing it, they offer a service where you can have a DVD made and there's a small cost for that.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Any other trustee comments, questions? Look on both pages.
I have a comment. I just want to thank you, Dr. Watson and your team for doing, doing all this work.
I think we all agree. And now is the time for any public comment on this information only item. The one thing I'll ask, which I would have asked if we were meeting in person is if you. Can indicate somehow you want to make public comment either in the chat or by raising a hand. And if you can state your first and last name, and if there's an unusual spelling, spell it. So our minutes accurately reflect your name. And then try to leave your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment?
I'll just offer one reminder, if there are individuals joining on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. We do have one public comment from Fon Tui.
Okay, Ms. Tui. And if you, I, I can see your name spelled on the screen, but if you could spell it for our minutes as well, your last name.
Okay, my last name is T U H Y. Um, I have a senior this year, but I also have. A senior at a different high school that's a family member. And so this has become very difficult. Like, how do we determine? Who we get to invite, especially when there's maybe. A mom, a dad and a stepdad or their siblings. Like, how do you determine who to invite? Do you leave your younger kids at home and go to your older kids' graduation? Like, what, what are families supposed to do here? I just feel very. Frustrated. I know that Mr. Watson has put a lot of work into this. But I'm still very worried on how our family is going to be able to attend this graduation. I also have heard from other schools, maybe in other states, which I know Rob. You have, you were talking about even other cities like Butte or Billings. Maybe just the whole school doing it and just we live stream it and then. Families don't have to pick who they invite because that's a very difficult decision. Do I invite mom and my, and my stepdad? Do I invite dad and my stepmom? You know, so that's a very difficult decision for parent families to, to do as well. As the other thing that's a problem is you're saying to reserve the dates of the fourth, fifth and sixth. A lot of parents work Monday through Friday. So this is going to be a very difficult decision on which school do you pick to have Saturday? You know, and that becomes hard on families to say, oh, now I just got back to work because now. A lot of us are just now going back to work. Are, are our bosses going to allow us to take a Thursday and Friday off? You know, this is. This is going to be hard on all families. And I know I've talked to a lot of students. And they really want to be together in one graduation together. So. Is it a way that we could do all the kids together and just zoom it for the families? So those kids can have that moment of being together? Thank you.
Thank you. And as you know, we don't respond to public comment, but we do hear your thoughts. And you're certainly welcome to contact Dr. Watson. You know, but I think we've heard you loud and clear here. So thank you for your public comment. Is there any other member of the public who would like? And I see that Cohen has made a public comment that I can read. It says, I concur with the district paying for a photographer. To at least give everyone an electronic copy. So that's from Cohen, C O A N Mercer, M E R C E R. Is there any other public comment? Let me double check on the second page. Not seeing any. Okay, but one more second since sometimes there's a lag. But not seeing any, then that concludes this information item. So.
Trustee Holland, we do have one additional public comment that was typed into the chat.
Okay, I can read that. It's from the Scoville family. So I don't know. If there's a person identified as the person typing it rather than. The family name, but it's my sentiments echo those of Fonz. I also have a senior. Any other public comment? Not seeing any. Are you seeing any Hatton?
Nope. At this point I do not see any other comments.
Okay. Well, thank you for those comments. And we, just to let everyone know who's listening or participating in this meeting virtually. The trustees have received all public comments and we have been reviewing them on graduation, on graduation comments. So we appreciate. You sending them in electronically as well. So thank you for that. And then we get to see two, which is when I get to be sad. Because we are saying goodbye to two trustees who have been such an addition to the board. So first I'll talk about trustee Kendall. And try not to be too sad. Anyway, so you know, trustee Kendall came to the board with prior civic volunteer service. She came after serving on city council. So she brought a wealth of information about things in the city and the county that have always. Been reflected in her thoughtful comments and her questions. And in terms of her boardsmanship, she often, you know, had questions and comments about the more fragile. Populations in our school district. And I think that that's always really important to have someone who remember those particular groups. But she also had to, you know, she went to Hellgate High School and her kids went to Hellgate High School. So she has. You know, great loyalty to the district and to public service both. And she's just a careful, thoughtful thinker. She expresses ideas in a very powerful way. Even if they're understated, they are become overstated because, in a good way, because of the way that she does express herself. And I'm sure if any other trustees want to jump in on here, because I'm. You know, disappointed that we're losing Heidi, but I know life moves on. So I just want to say thank you for the six years you've been on the board. In addition to that, you've become a really good friend and I appreciate your. Larger conversations about where the district is going, about where our kids are going. About, you know, just making sure that a public education in Missoula County. Means what it does mean right now, which is that it's really opens a lot of different pathways to students. So Heidi. Where I'd usually be handing you. Small plaque to say thanks for your service, but I think Lenora might have put it in the mail already. You also get your name plate so you can have your name showing. Have any kind of meeting where someone needs to know your name. So.
Can I just say a few words?
Yes, please do.
Party words. I so appreciated having this very, very great privilege and. Getting to know people in the school district, teachers, administrators, people who take care of the buildings, other trustees. I mean, it has just been remarkable. The people who go into education really love. Education and they are so devoted to what they do. It's, it's just. Been incredible to me to see the devotion and love. Every day in the, in the schools and in the administration buildings. So I just want to thank everyone. It's a hard time to be leaving and I wish you all the best and. I know that you will manage through this exceptionally well. And thank you Chair Holland for your really kind words and I, I will miss it also and I'll miss you and. And everyone. So thank you so much for making it a really wonderful experience.
Thanks. And we can all clap, 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 clap. I'm, I'm keeping my avatar up because I have to turn my computer sideways to talk into my microphone. So it's. A really weird picture you would be seeing, but I'm clapping too. So thank you. And then trustee Newbold, you too have served for six years on the board. And Jennifer, I just want to say you are thorough. You catch things. You catch details, you catch subtle points. We appreciate. That a little bit like, you know, student trustee Odegaard, you keep us paying attention to small things as well as big things. But you also get the big picture. You understand how the district works. You are thoughtful in your questions. You are thoughtful in your comments. You bring. A very quiet presence to the board. And yet when, when you say something, it's always spot on. It's either a really good question, a really good observation. And like tonight, you saw that, you know, there was basically a law school problem on, on the agenda. And I appreciate that. You have that kind of background so that you know when things are, can be complicated. I mean, a lot of the decisions we make have legal ramifications. So I appreciate that you brought that skillset as well. Similar to what Heidi brought from her service at city council. And so. I did get to deliver your plaque yesterday, social distancing and your name tag. And you were happened to be having a law student who's working with you drop something off. So I got to see one of my law students. And we all social distanced. So luckily you actually have your plaque and name tags. So thank you for your service. And I don't know if other people are typing into comments, comments into chat. So please look at that, both. Heidi and Jennifer. And I don't know if you want to say anything, Jennifer, but as I mentioned with Heidi, I'm sad. Because you both have been such great assets to the board.
Yeah, I sure do. I just want to, I just want to thank everyone also and just express what an absolute. Oh, I didn't think I was going to get emotional. What a privilege it has been. And even at times I would say fun. People always are so gracious in, and I'm sure other trustees have experienced this, so gracious in thanking us for our service and often refer to it as a thankless job. But really it's been, it's been my privilege to serve and. I've really enjoyed every part of it, whether it's reviewing policies or approving contracts. Even the budget stuff. I'd like to say that after six years, I have mastered some of the school funding issues, Pat, but. I'll just leave it at, I have a good, solid working knowledge. But really, the, like Heidi, I think the best part has been. For me, coming into contact with incredible staff and administration in the district. And just witnessing and supporting their work. It's, it's been great and I am, I feel like we are in a very good place in our district. And although I'm really sad to be leaving and I'll miss it. I know that we are in good hands. So thanks.
Thanks. And more applause for trustee Newbold. I'm clapping too. And so now I get to do something that's happy, which is. Have Erin Lipkin, I think she's still here. She may be on page. Oh, there she is. And so she is the super in Missoula County Superintendent of Schools. She may be on page. Oh, there she is. And so she is the super in Missoula County Superintendent of Schools. And then Pat McHugh is our district clerk. And so this is the moment when we get to have the certificates issued of election and administer the oaths and seat the new trustees. And so the new trustees are Cohen Mercer, Jeff Agaris and Jen Vogel. I've had the ability to chat with you each personally, and I really appreciate your willingness to serve on this board. From our smaller conversations, it seems like you will bring a lot of great talent and dedication to the board. And so normally if we were meeting in person, just like we were talking about with photo opportunities, there would be a photo opportunity for your family to take pictures of you as you were issued, you're, or given your oath and issued your certificates. So with that being said, I don't know if Erin or Pat wants to explain what will happen next. Would it be?
Sure, I can, I can introduce the topic and turn it over to Erin if that's okay.
That sounds great. I will meet myself.
So the, as, as mentioned, we're issuing certificates of election to three candidates. Trustee Jennifer Vogel is a current board member and thank you for your continued service to MCPS and the community. All three candidates were elected by acclamation. As, as mentioned, those candidates are Jeffrey Agaris, Cohen Mercer and Jennifer Vogel. The term for all the candidates is three years. And to assume the trustee position, the candidates must be qualified and to be qualified requires that the candidates take the oath of office. So I'm pleased to introduce Erin Lipkin and thank her for being here tonight to undertake this important task. So Erin, thank you for being here and I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. I will just go in the order listed on your agenda. So I believe Cohen is first. Normally I like to have trustees place their hand on the school of Montana, that thick book that memorized, refer frequently to. So just pretend, Cohen, that your is on that book and repeat after me, please. I do solemn swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I'll support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
The Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I believe next we have Jeffrey. And are you here, Jeffrey? I'm not seeing. Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
All right. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I'll support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And finally, Jennifer.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Repeat.
I better get this right. I've heard it twice.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now if we weren't in this virtual world, Jennifer and Heidi would be moving away from their seats and we would actually be seating Jeff and Cohen. And Jen could stay where she is because she would just be staying where she is. So we won't do that, but we do welcome Jeff, Jen and Cohen to the board. And so there is one final thing, which will take a little bit of working through to how, how to get us all to sign it. But even though it says in the agenda, it's on page 59, it's on page 61. So welcome, welcome to the board. We hope that you will find your service is as meaningful as I think all the rest of the trustees currently on the board have found it. And both Jennifer and Heidi have also expressed that same sentiment. And so now there is one additional procedural requirement that there is a code of ethics that all the trustees who currently sit on the board now, beginning going into this 2020 session after the May, the second Tuesday, May election. So Pat, if you want to walk us through what that form is in terms of what it says, and then how, if there's a reasonable plan to get us all to be able to come and sign it in some fashion, or perhaps mailed up to Jen in Potomac.
All right. Thank you Chair Holland. And the, as mentioned, the form is on page 61. And the, the option, I guess, for signing it could, could be here at my office too, if we wanted to coordinate with, with Cara. Since we're here at the office, but that would be an option. And, and I'll go ahead and as practice, read the form, which you can follow along on page 61. As a member of my local Board of Trustees, I will strive to improve public education. And to that end, I will attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly held board meetings. Render all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. Encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members and seek systematic communications between the board and students, staff and all elements of the community. Work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of the school to the superintendent. Recognize and respect the responsibilities that properly are delegated to the superintendent. Communicate to the superintendent expression of public reaction to board policies, school program, school programs or staff. Inform myself about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing needed information, such as those sponsored by the Montana and National School Boards Associations. Support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff and insist on regular and impartial evaluation of staff. Avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. Avoid compromising the board or administration by inappropriate individual action or comments and respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law. To strive sincerely to build better relationships with one another and with the school superintendent. To vote our individual convictions and do what we can to destroy fractionalism on the board. Remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending public schools and then the signatures by the various trustees. Chair Holland, should I move on to the next item?
I'm sorry, I, I was unmuted myself. I was just going to say I would encourage all the trustees to contact Pat and determine the best way to get that document signed so that we can get it signed. And I, is there also some other paperwork that the incoming trustees need to sign as well?
Yes, thank you. So the oath of office was administered and, and I know that Jeff and Cohen have already contacted Cara Torterich in my office to make arrangements for having their signature notarized tomorrow morning. So I appreciate that. And then we have worked it out with Jennifer to have her signature notarized and sealed. So that'll be the next step. The certificate of election will be, require the signature and notary by the, by the three candidates.
And is that then filed with superintendent Lipkin?
That's exactly right. So once, once those are signed and notarized, then we'll send that to, to Erin Lipkin.
Okay. So yes, Pat, if you want, let me just. So.
I, I have a comment.
Oh, sure. Please, trustee Lorenzen.
But can't we all just sign that form and mail it to Pat and then he could staple them together?
That works for me for sure.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yep. I have to stop by the board, the business building anyway. So I'll come and sign mine and just leave it with you and yeah, compile them in the way that you feel is best, Pat.
I'll have to come sign mine too. I've written all over the back of it.
So we can get that done. And so we do come to five, which is board reorganizations. So at this time, I am no longer the chair. And so I will turn it over to Pat McHugh, who's our district clerk in order to have an election of board officers for 2020, 21. And then we will move on to appointing the clerk and appointing the grants designee for the same time period. So Pat, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. And this is per statute and policy. We, within 25 days of the election, the board must reorganize, which means electing a chair and vice chairs. And at the first step is the selection of the board chair and our practice is to elect the board chair, or our practice to elect the board chair is to take nominations. We take nominations without a second. And then I'll list the names in alphabetical order by last name and announce each name in succession and, and then ask for a, essentially a vote in the manner that, that you've been voting tonight with a, in the, in the chat for the nominations as I've written them down.
Pat, there's a nomination in chat that I don't know if you want to check.
Oh, thank you. So we have a nomination for Marshall Holland to be the board chair. Do we have any additional nominations? Any additional nominations for board chair? One final offer to nominate a board chair? Seeing none, then I would ask that the board indicate by why or yes or in or a no. If you approve the nomination of Marshall Holland as the board chair.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I see all yeses, so I can thankfully turn the remainder of the meeting over to you, Chair Holland.
Okay, and we're almost done. Thank you for your patience tonight. It's been a longer than usual meeting, but I appreciate all that we have been able to accomplish. So we're on to appointing the clerk for 2020, 2021. And so I would take nominations for board clerk. In past years, it has been Pat McHugh, but I will take any, any nominations. They don't have to be seconded. And so trustee Lorenzen has nominated Pat McHugh. Oh, whoops, I forgot the vice chairs. Thank you trustee service. Let's take a step back. Although we'll consider trustee Lorenzen's nomination for Mr. McHugh, I'm still effective. So now we will make, I will accept nominations for vice chair for the K-12 or what we call the elementary trustees. Is there a nomination for the K-12 vice chair? I'm I'm not, oh, there we go. I don't, so there is a nomination for Diane Lorenzen as the vice chair for the K-12 or what we call the elementary trustees. Is there any other nomination or nominations? I'm not seeing any. So please indicate whether you support this nomination or not by typing in why, yes, or in, no.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you. Let me double check. Yes, it looks like it's unanimous as to the vice chair for the elementary trustees. And then we will come to the vice chair for the high school trustees. And that is a nomination for one of the members who served as high school trustees. Let me, there's one new message. And so there's a message or there's an indication in the chat that Anne Wake has been nominated for that position. Is there any other nomination or nominations? See none. One more chance. See none. Then again, if you approve that nomination, please type in why or yes.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you. I don't know if I see. Oh, there he is. Yes, Jeff, trustee. All trustees have voted yes. And so now we will return to what was on the table, which was motion to have Pat McHugh serve as, let me get my paperwork, the clerk for 2020, 2021. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of having Pat McHugh serve as the clerk, please indicate yes or why in chat. When trustee Vogel, if you can indicate your vote.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you very much. And that, let me double check. That is unanimous as to Pat continuing to serve as our clerk. And then it is an action to appoint grants designee for 2020 dash 2021. And Pat, remind me, is that typically Dr. Watson or the person who sits as superintendent?
That's correct. It's been the superintendent who served that role.
So is there a nomination for, from anyone to identify someone to serve as the grants? Get the right language. The grants designee. And there has been Dr. Watson nominated. And trustee Lorenzen, I didn't know if he had a question. Oh, okay, thanks. I get it now. Dr. Watson, yes, I get it. So Dr. Watson has been nominated to be the grants designee. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of having Dr. Watson serve as a grants designee for 2022, 2021, please indicate by typing in why or yes. Let me see if I've caught everyone. And trustee Vogel.
Vogel is a yes.
Thanks. And then for everyone who has stayed through this meeting that's a little bit long tonight, we are taking public comment on any non-agenda item at the end of the meeting as well, as we do in every board meeting. So if anyone has any public comment about a non-agenda item that they'd like to make, please either raise your hand in some fashion or indicate so in chat. please either raise your hand in some fashion or indicate so in chat.
Chair Holland, this is, this is Superintendent Watson. I do have one more announcement I forgot, but I can wait to make a comment.
No. Go ahead. I, I'm not seeing any other public comment, so go ahead with your final closing announcement.
Just, just a reminder from, for the trustees, yesterday you should have received an email from the Montana School Boards Association about the, I forget the name of it, the annual meeting coming up on June 11th. And it is a virtual meeting, so anyone can really go and attend that as a trustee. We are required, I believe, to have a certain number of trustees there to get, to make sure we have enough votes. So I believe it's in the afternoon on June 11th. If you look for that email yesterday from the School Boards Association, it looks like the meeting is scheduled June 11th from 1:00 to 5:00. They, they likely have something else in the morning as well. So it might be a full day of, of, of a meeting. But the registration closes on Friday. I just was reminded of that. So if you're interested in going to that or attending virtually and representing the district, you can sign up through the School Boards Association. Please let Lenora know because we cover any registration costs that might be needed for that.
Thank you. And Dr. Watson or Lenora, can you get that information forwarded to, to Cohen and Jeff so that they can see it as well, since they may, may not have been on that mailing list yet?
We'll do that.
Okay, thanks. And trustee Wake indicated it looks like there may not be a cost for the annual meeting, so. But we, but any trustees interested in attending virtually or otherwise, if you can let me know and Lenora know, just so we can keep track of who might be attending. That would be very appreciated. And with that, we are done. And thank you to everyone for your patience. And thank you for having everyone get, for being able to get a lot done tonight. And hopefully future meetings won't be quite so long for those newer trustees. But I really appreciate that you were all able to stay in, stay here for the whole meeting. So thank you all so much. And with that, I will assume that Hatton will close out the meeting. And thanks to all the staff who has remained at the meeting. I see, you know, lots of staff and also Student Trustee Odegaard was here for the whole thing. So thank you, thank you, trustee, Student Trustee Odegaard, and I hope to see you tomorrow.
Thanks, everyone. We'll get the recording posted up to YouTube tomorrow. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Marsha.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night.